Recording in progress.
Please rise as you're able to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our February 3rd, 2025 city council meeting. We begin every meeting with our open comment period, and I've got a list of at least 11 names here. Just to go through our rules for open comment, it's an opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on items that we will not be having a public hearing on during the later parts of our agenda. Each person has up to two minutes to speak for a total of 20 minutes. If we go over that 20 minutes, I will ask our council if they'd like to suspend the rules to extend that period. But because of the limited time, we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. I'd request that each speaker be concise to allow more people to speak during this time. And participants are also encouraged to limit comments generally to topics that are within the scope and jurisdiction of the council's ability to affect policy. Council members and staff do not respond to your comments during public comment, but will instead follow up on any specific requests separately. If you have materials to share with the council, you may give them to the city clerk over here to distribute. And when you come to the podium, please state your name clearly and make sure that the, so that the clerk has your information if you do need follow-up. So with that, I will start with our list, and the first one up is Judy Young. Yep, come up to the speaker, and then here's the timer right here. It'll give you a warning about a minute before you're supposed to wrap up.
My name is Judy Young, and I live in Ward 1. I am on a number of disability advocacy groups, including the Regenton Quality Council, and very important to the City of Rochester is the Cross Disability Focus Group. We had a meeting today from 1:00 to 2:30, and it came to our attention about the regional complex and our concern that doing Phase 1, when the community engagement surveys indicated indoor facility, you know, would be what the community wants. By doing outdoor, we're eliminating many disability activities, especially for Special Olympics. We need cornhole space, which is now a sport. We have 50 to 60 athletes throwing cornhole bags at chip shots, and it doesn't go real well. So we just would like you to take a look at that, the data you have, and maybe give disability groups a little explanation of why that change happened. The other thing is, I noticed in the final report for the complex is that many groups were asked. There were IMAA, Islamic group, different youth groups. There was no disability group, we noticed, that was not asked. There are several disability groups. There's a SAM group, there's Regenton Quality Council, there's, you know, ARC Southeast Minnesota that could have been invited to give their input. So we asked that in the future, that you don't forget about those. And I'm on several of those, so. And then my son, Rob, is here, and he just would like to, this is quite the experience, he would just like to say hi, and he's one of those Special Olympics that's going to represent Team Minnesota in the USA Games that are in Minneapolis next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. I know that Judy did give a very impassioned speech. Going forward, please, let's refrain from applause during public comment. That will just give us more time for others to speak, so, thank you. Moving on to Bree Thermus. Bree?
I think it's Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Thermus. Is that you? Sorry, Bill. It looked like B R E E instead of B I L L.
It's my penmanship.
Okay, it's, go ahead.
I'm with Timberland Partners. My name is Bill Thermus. I'm with Timberland Partners. We own and manage Preserve on Main, which is located on the south side, right next to the complex that you're looking to possibly put in there. We just had some questions on how the access to this is going to be. Is it going to come through our road that's there? Will be further south? Is there a presentation? I know you can't respond, but that would be helpful for us to know how the access to the new area would be. Second item was related to the sewer system. Would you be bringing in sewer to the project? We are using a lift station currently, and that's problematic for us. So we were wondering if there's a sewer system, if we'd be able to tie into it. And then the third piece for us is the way this land is pitched. When we have heavy rains, the water runs towards our building, and there's a old dis- our conduit that takes the water away from our building. We end up with water in our building, so when they're doing the plans for the new program, if they can keep that in mind when they're pitching it, so that we don't have the water coming towards our property, that would be very helpful, too. So we're very much in favor of the project. We think it's a wonderful idea, and we're right next to it. It'll be fun to be a part of it. It's just those couple, three things we're just curious about. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Moving on to Sarah Jirdy.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Jirdy. I live in Ward 5. City council members and Mayor Norton, the decisions surrounding the location and design of the sports complex have the potential to provide economic stimulus and meet the evolving needs of Rochester youth. The daily reality our youth face is growing more hostile, exclusionary, and unwelcoming, particularly for our youth from historically marginalized communities. Youth have growing fear and anxiety. We need safe and equitable spaces after school, and the sports complex can help meet those needs. RPS Community School Coordinator reports that lack of engaging and safe after-school activities for youth can contribute to housing instability, as unsupervised youth can make decisions that result in eviction from their rental units. Although there are options of school-age childcare and Boys and Girls Club, these are not meeting needs due to cost, waitless, and limited locations. Elementary, middle, and high schoolers need equitable, safe spaces to be in community together after school. As an AmeriCorps member at Longfellow Elementary, I witnessed firsthand the benefits of enriching after-school opportunities, including enhanced self-esteem, improved social and emotional regulation, and better engagement and success in academics. I urge city council to conduct a thorough needs assessment of the youth of Rochester, with particular attention to youth of color, youth who are dreamers, and LGBTQIA+ youth prior to making final decisions about the location and design of the sports complex. I urge you to consider the formation of the youth coalition, including youth and adults representing sports teams and representatives from nonprofits like RPS, Community Education, and Boys and Girls Club, just to name a few.
Sarah, if you could wrap up.
In a world of increasing fear, you, city council members, and Mayor Norton have the opportunity to lead with love, and our community members will follow your lead as we demonstrate for Rochester's most vulnerable and frightened youth that love is greater than fear. Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to Mark Bransford.
Hello, Mark Bransford, 317 15th Avenue Southwest. I didn't mean to say that. I do echo the woman that spoke about disability assessments, both on this side of the, and from the side of the dais. I see that missing quite a bit, so I would urge that to be part of the equation. So, okay, I lost time there. So tonight's selection of the site for the sports complex is the culmination of multiple approvals from the city council, state legislators, and finally, and most importantly, the passing of the referendum. Our chain of decisions and already significant expenditure to reach tonight's approval marks the conclusion of the selection process and the commencement of the development phases, which will be managed by our incredibly talented staff. So, this is important. Phasing a project is standard practice. It is important to maintain consistency in our approach and avoid selectively deciding when phasing is appropriate. For example, the dam replacement project will be phased, and initially, it was, it will not include several key features presented to the public, such as trails and bike lanes due to funding limitations. However, these elements will eventually be implemented. The city will follow through on Phase 2 of this project, just as with numerous other projects. The current plan is comparable to those implemented in cities such as Des Moines, Corvilles, Bettendorf, and Cedar Rapids. These cities have experienced significant economic benefits from their sports complexes. They have served as catalysts for businesses, housing development, and significant tourism dollars. As an illustration, events in Des Moines generate tens of millions annually, while complexes in Bettendorf and Corvilles contribute 10 to 25 million per year.
If you can start wrapping.
Yep. Weigh this against the investment of 65 million. The sports complex represents sorely needed economic diversity that will yield substantial returns to Rochester. This is not speculative or wishful thinking. We have concrete examples of successful outcomes. I look forward to your discussion and approval of the site and the green light to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Nick Campion.
Council first continues. All right. I haven't timed this, so I'm going to go as fast as I can. Council president, mayor, members of the council, first, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service to the community. I know, without saying, complex issues like this, no pun intended, take a lot of time to figure out and to figure out how to move forward. I've been accused of many things, but I've never been accused of being brief. So to try and contain my arguments, I'm going to read a little bit, which isn't my standard, but I'm going to jump right to the punchline. I think building a sports complex at the Seneca Site is undesirable for the City of Rochester. The site is poorly integrated into our travel and lodging apparatus, and I think that a lot of this is being driven by the idea of use-it-or-lose-it nature of sales tax. Unfortunately, the long-term costs of a poor site outweigh and dramatically exceed both the planning and construction costs. And so I think pausing to evaluate the whole picture here is healthy. One of the most important charges you have is maintaining the public trust. At the risk of arguing a point I've heard 100 times sitting in your seats, a bad outcome here is worse than no outcome. We're saddling the city with generational maintenance expenses, attempting to construct a facility during the time of the highest construction prices in the history of Rochester. In a location, that seems suboptimal. I just can't understand the rush. I could potentially overlook many of the drawbacks of not understanding the long-term operational costs of facilities like Soldier's Field or what we're going to do with the future of the Silver Lake Pool if this site felt like a slam dunk.
If you can start wrapping up.
I will do just that. I think a site that is at the intersection of 52 and 63 encourages regional visitors to come and leave, and I think that we need to think more about how we integrate it into our great hospitality and lodging services throughout the rest of Rochester. I'm going to skip to the conclusion, even though I've got a bunch of great points here. I hope you consider alternatives. Sometimes the best course of action is rejecting the only option. Waiting rather than saddling my kids, hopefully they'll come back or stay, with paying for a poorly realized idea is and should be considered a bad option. Please look at viable alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campion. Moving on to Diana LaSet. I'm sorry if I messed up your name there.
Hey, this is my first time here. I'm kind of shaky. I'm here to speak about a few issues that we're facing as renters. This is my oldest son. We live in the same building, but different units. And it's at Silver Lake. And we're on a housing program, and we are still experiencing black mold, water issues, musty smell, and trapped windows. We have violations from the city that were written up quite some time ago. And they've been ignored as well by management and the landlord. I'm talking also for all the renters that are renting that building. We have pictures, we have videos. We have everything that we need to move on whichever direction this is going to go in. I don't know. But there's so much more about the laws, this management, and landlord are breaking, and I thank you.
Thank you. If you can give some of your materials and provide your address to the city clerk, we'll follow up with you. Moving on to Casey McGregor.
Hello, Mayor, council. Welcome, new council. I'm Casey McGregor. I have three bullet points today. Number one, the study session on January 15th was not recorded. It is important to note that typically, there are two sets of attorneys representing opposing views, like in a courtroom, one for Argument A and another for Argument B. During this session, we had two attorneys present a singular viewpoint, which I believe did not fully capture the complexities of the issues. Specifically, I would like to emphasize that the city administrator is not an elected official. It does not possess greater authority than the council. I found the praise to the administrator and the city attorney excessive. To ensure comprehensive understanding, engage an additional set of attorneys who can provide an opposing perspective, I think is crucial. This approach would contribute to more balanced and realistic view of the matter, as the perspective presented seemed to reflect a very left-leaning ideology. Number two, a few months ago, Mayor Norton expressed the enthusiasm regarding the Green New Deal and how much Rochester was poised to benefit from this federal funding. However, with the recent comments from the new President Trump, who stated the Green New Deal is canceled and referred to it as the Green New scam, I'm concerned about the potential implications for Rochester specifically. How might this development affect the city's ability to secure funding that Mayor Norton and the city anticipated? How will this affect energy prices in Rochester? Number three, the sports complex. I have been opposed to this initiative from the outset, and I believe it primarily caters to affluent individuals. My background has shaped my perspective to view this development skeptically. Additionally, I would appreciate further clarity on the financial projections associated with this facility. Understanding the potential implications for taxpayers is essential, particularly regarding the costs that may arise once the complex is operational.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor.
One second. Who pays the salaries, utilities, janitorial services, health insurance, benefits package, et cetera? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mahathi Kandimala.
Hello. Nevermind, I can't. Okay. Hi, I'm Mahathi Kandimala, and I live in Ward 5. And I just wanted to spend some time talking about the Rochester Regional Sports Complex, like a lot of other people here have spoken about. Just for some context, I grew up right next to Soldier's Field, so I had summertime access to a lovely park and wintertime access to the various courts and other activities happening at the YMCA. Unfortunately, the YMCA has shut down, and I think it's really sad that kids today just don't have a similar space that they can engage in. I know when I was growing up, I used to play basketball for hours there, and it just kept me away from just spending my time watching TV or playing computer games. And as you probably know, the amount of activities and opportunities for kids has drastically gone down post-COVID. And I think, of course, this isn't a complete solution to that problem, but I hope that having some parts of this sports complex accessible to the public will help our youth have some sort of an indoor space. I think this not only aligns with the city's goals of, you know, equity, but I think it also promotes long-term economic growth. This is because cities thrive when young people remain or return in the city, and that's because they're high spenders. They, you know, pay at restaurants, bars, they pay rent, they shop. But without adequate opportunities while growing up, it's, you know, really hard for people to want to return back to Rochester. And so, anyway, thank you for your time, and I hope you consider these while deciding how the sports complex benefits our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Al Lun.
Thank you very much. I'm Al Lun. I was a past board member of the YMCA, actually, and with the dissolution of Y, I'm echoing some of the comments being made, particularly from the previous speaker. The fact is, the Y had social responsibility, youth development, and those missions need to be carried on. With the sports complex, you will have a chance to really reignite that kind of support and service for our community. So I'm urging, you should consider development and design of the sports complex to also bring in, maybe utilizing, well, what the widely-known adopted methodology within our community, which is called designing. You bring in, you know, various aspects to really figure out and determine from various perspectives, what are the requirements from groups that may not be considered in general? That would be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Miniger.
Hi, my name is Ron Miniger. I'm in Ward 3. I've been a resident for 20 years. When I came to Rochester, I thought it was going to be a good community. I was wrong. I think it is a great community. I love living in Rochester. I have three comments to make, brief. One, I think this is a great idea, this being the sports complex. I did not know this from previous speakers and Sarah Jirdy. However, listening to the eloquent comments of Sarah, I would urge that Sarah's thoughts be considered. I've never met her before, so we didn't get up on you. I think she provided a good model of how we could approach the usage of the facility, which is my third and last point. Consider having some metrics that would identify the optimal usage of this facility so that we don't become like a lot of the professional sports stadiums across the country, which really bother me when I see them sitting there idle. So consider concrete metrics that would optimize the usage, that show how great this exciting project can be. Thanks.
Thank you. Molly Dennis.
Thank you. I'm Molly Dennis. As the illegal gag order censure has ended, it is sad that council has silenced both the public comment and public hearings last month. However, in the spirit of public transparency and government accountability, it's important for taxpayers to know where their tax dollars are being spent. I know from personal experience, our mayor wines and dines foreign dignitaries. However, from my focus right now will be on council members, potential misuse of public tax dollars. Sadly, new council members have not even attended the required council meetings, let alone many have missed very important community events. This council member pay stub, which I have right here, I have a council member pay stub, shows that for 40 hours, you make over $1,000 a week. This is a council member, so as a former council member, I kept track of every hour I spent, and I hope that all council members are doing the same. Both Palmer and Doring both have publicly stated that they consider their council job a part-time job. So I believe they should be paid also part-time. Perhaps council members who do not put in the 40 hours per week recorded, they should donate half of their over $220,000 income to charity, maybe just only 100 grand of it. This would help rebuild public trust that I've heard so many people talk about. Transparency is trust, and integrity does matter. Speaking of integrity, not only was I sent a letter from Councilmember Doring threatening me not to attend these council meetings or church, but I also was sent a threatening letter from a lobbyist group, which was politically funded, that gave money to several council members that threatened me as well. This is not right either. Elected officials should be paid the hours that they work and be transparent with the money that they receive from political donations.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis.
City council is nonpartisan full-time, and I believe we need to be honest.
Ms. Dennis, your time is up.
Transparency is public trust.
Does your.
Thank you for the.
Match ours. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have on my list. Are there others that wish to be heard during open comment period? If not, I will close the public comment period, and we will move on to call to order. Clerk Esler, if you can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Council President Schubring.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
We will now move on to the city administrators' report. Administrator Zelmus, please take it away.
Thank you, council president, council members, Mayor Norton, members of the public. I wasn't planning to start this way. I normally start by thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence at all times, but I also just want to echo the comments from open comment and wish Rob well, representing the state of Minnesota at his Special Olympics next year. So keep practicing. And with that, I would move on and just point out, we do have some fun events coming up this week at the Public Library on Thursday, February 6th, from 5:00 to 7:00. You're able to go to the winter book sale. Just a reminder that looking in the ramps is free if you get there by 4:01 and stay, and so you have the opportunity to go to the book sale that is supported by Friends of Rochester Public Library. You also have the opportunity to renew your membership there if you are a member, or to become a member if you're interested. Did also want to point out that while we had a little warm-up, we have Social ICE coming to Rochester, February 7th and 8th, Friday and Saturday. That will be from 4:00 to 10:00 each night downtown. Again, ramps, if you get there at 4:01, free. You can't park overnight for free, but you can park overnight and pay a small fee in the morning. Also, street parking and surface parking are free after 5:00 and all day and evening on the weekends. So hopefully folks will head out. Maybe it'll be the perfect temperature. We also did just want to point out that we have Minnesota Parks Artist in Residence, Cassandra Buck. She's at the Ox Bowl Zollman Zoo. So those are. So those are the dates in February, the 7th, 8th, 12th, 15th, 21st, and 22nd, 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. for the first four dates, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. for the second two. You can check that out. You could scan the code, or you can Google Ox Bow Zollman Zoo and head out and check that out, our partners at Olmsted County. And then we do have an upcoming open house on February 12th from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. at Rochester Public Library, right across the street. That will be for East Center Street reconstruction, and that's the second open house for that. So just wanted to point those things out, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Zelmus. Moving on to the mayor's report, Mayor Norton.
Sure, just a couple things tonight first. Thanks to the public. I think it's great that we get input. So appreciate so many people coming to speak today. And regarding Social ICE, which our city administrator mentioned, there is a fam jam, family activity on, I think it's the 8th, the second day. So encourage folks to bring their littles out for that. It's great fun. Just a reminder, we have a new council. I think some of you have gotten these emails, but not everyone had heard about it. The National League of Cities, which is the parent organization of the League of Minnesota Cities, has their Congressional Cities Conference, the CCC, March 10th through 12th. I'll be going for the Board of Directors and some committee meetings, but I know this is short notice for a lot of you. If you can, if you are free, you could come. I know some of you are not because of the short notice. There's a second opportunity for National League of Cities Conference in November, which is a city summit, which is really focused on city issues as opposed to federal issues. Although this year I feel like I need a federal update because everything's changing from day to day, and hopefully by March we'll have a little more information. So I just wanted to give that as a reminder. And one of the activities that the National League of Cities has been working on is something called Cities of Opportunity. The city of Rochester participated in this several years ago, and they've redone their theory of change. So the Cities of Opportunity is to find ways to advance health equity and well-being in your city, and they've changed it. So now the first section, which is in yellow, are things you can do individually at home. There are online courses, it's kind of a self-training. And then as you gain capacity and interest, you can move over for teams. And then you can have teams of folks that can participate on a project that the city determines with their staff is the direction they want to, something they want to work on. They'll provide you support. It's really a great opportunity. We got several grants and funds brought back to the city of Rochester as part of that team's work. And then the last one is an alumni forum for some of us old goats, and I'm going to participate in that this year. They've asked me to help share, having been through this before. So just thought I'd point that out, and I'll ship it to you. Those online courses are free and easy to do, and you can do them at your leisure. Family Service Rochester turned 60, it was their 60th anniversary, which was really remarkable. And it's one of those many, many nonprofit organizations we have in the community. And Councilmember Wall and Doring joined me today at that anniversary. I know, you know, we all show up for things when we can. And so we had a couple folks there today to welcome, to thank them for the past 60 years and welcome them toward the next 60-plus ahead. And the programs they do vary from social service-type organizations to things like Meals on Wheels, which so many folks in our community really need. And they've been focusing a lot on aging and helping our community, even the city of Rochester, adjust as the population ages. And we do some universal design. So anyway, very interested and interesting, and wanted to say congratulations to them for 60 years. Again, we had an International Relations Committee event to talk about the Germany and Japan trips. It looks like the Japan trip to our sister city Akita, as well as Hiroshima, Nagasaki, and Tokyo is filling up. So that looks like it's a go. We still have another month or so to find out if we have interest. I have had some calls about the German trip as well. So if anyone is interested in that, again, the dates are August 7th through 14th in Japan and September 12th through 20th during Oktoberfest in Germany. So should be a fun time. And this is also, I love to read month, February is. So some of you may be invited if you haven't already, or if you're interested, let me know. I already have a full calendar of reading at public and private schools and nonprofits around town. So it's really a fun time. My passion has always been and always will be children and education. So it's a real joy for me to be able to support kids, and it really dovetails nicely with the year about youth. And one way to do that is to read to them and support them. So that's what I've got for today, and I will pass the, I guess, mic.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate all of those events. Moving on to the order of the agenda, are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Staff, council members? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Wall. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to our consent agenda, Councilmember Miller is pulling item F-19. Are there any other items that are being pulled? We will invite a motion to approve and block items F-1 through F-18 and F-20 through F-21.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Doring. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to our public hearings. We have two public hearings on our agenda this evening, and we are actually going to hear, there are two items related to the same application. And so Mr. McGill will make a presentation on both items, and then we will hold a public hearing on both as they're related to the same application. And then we, as a council, will take two motions on those items. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. McGill on item G-1, which is an annexation by Bigelow Homes LLC.
Thank you, Council President. Schubring, Mayor Norton, members of the council, good evening. My name is Desmond McGill. I'm with the Community Development Department. The subject annexation request is for 28.8 acres. It's located on the northwest side of the city, just east of 60th Avenue Northwest and approximately 500 feet south of King Arthur Road. It's surrounded on all sides by the city. At the present time, the applicant is requesting the UDC default zoning of the R2 zone district for the site, which is low-density residential small lot. The applicant has also submitted a concurrently running zone change application, which consists of five parcels within the city of Rochester that totals about 39 acres. The applicant looks to develop a 68-acre, single-family residential development consisting of 220 homes, generally 55 by feet wide by 120 feet deep, and is proposing an eight-acre parkland dedication on the site. The minimum lot width requirement in the R1 zoning district is 60 feet. The applicant is seeking the R2 zone change to accommodate the 55-foot lot width minimum for the development. The underlying zone district, or P2S comprehensive plan district, is low-density residential, and the proposed R2 zoning is consistent with this classification. Both the Development Review Team and the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending approval of these requests, and Commission unanimously approved the annexation and zone change by 6-0 vote. That concludes my introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. At this point, we will invite the applicant up, and the applicant has 10 minutes to discuss both the annexation and the zone change. So take it away.
Probably doesn't take two of us.
Please introduce yourself.
Tony Bigelow, Bigelow Homes. Good evening, Mayor, council members, council president. Good to be here. It's been a while. Yeah, we're looking for 60-acre total development. I guess it said 68 in Desmond, so I want to find those extra 8 acres somewhere. But when we annex in, the property will automatically become R2. The existing part that is annexed into the city is already R1, so we thought we'd make those two match up, get a better density, a little over 8-acre park. So we're excited about this. We'll have single-family homes in there, detached, slab-on-grade, split levels, ramblers, two stories. I think we'll have a good mix, and we'll take any questions from any of you. I don't know if I need to.
We'll call you back after the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Members of the public will have five minutes to discuss the annexation and zoning of this application. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this item? Absolutely. Come forward, introduce yourself.
I wasn't prepared for this, but something came up as I heard about this. My name is Colleen Spillers. I live in Ward Two. So I have a question about this. So you said a mix of homes, so are we looking at variable costs? So like, lower-income homes for affordability for families would be one question. And secondly, I have a question about the schools. So which school zone is this in? And how will this affect families and schools and rezoning of schools? I'm a teacher, so this affects me greatly. Like, you're looking at 220 homes for families. How often are we going to have to restructure school zones and bus lines and all that kind of stuff for adding a huge lot of what, I mean, I don't do, I don't do housing very often, but 220 homes seems like a lot, so. Those are just some questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Spillers. This is a public hearing. If you wish to be heard on this item, please step forward. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, I am going to close the public hearing and invite our applicants back up to address any questions that came up during the public hearing.
I don't know if I can answer any question. Once again, Tony Bigelow, Bigelow Homes. I don't know if I can answer your questions about what schools they'll go to. I have not looked into that personally. Although 220 homes sounds like a lot, this is probably about a 10-year project. I mean, I'm hoping it's five, but it'll be realistically 10-plus years. And that's all I can answer that.
Do you have any price point for these?
Well, yeah, I think affordable housing is a moving target always, but this will be what we consider affordable workforce. We did Kingsbury Hills Development, actually won the first 2001, and so we spent quite a bit of time developing that area. This will be similar to that. I don't know the price levels of the homes right now. We're looking at a year away before we can start building homes. So high 300s to low 400s right now in today's dollars. That's all I can answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll call you back if members of the council have additional questions. At this point, I'll open up to my colleagues to ask staff or the applicant any questions. Councilmember Keen.
Yes, I think the question come up of 68 acres of development and 60 acres, and I think the answer is the parkland dedication in between there. Is that a developer decision or a city decision or a negotiation, or how does that come to be?
Well, there is a standard parkland dedication for every, you know, unit that does come in. So I believe this probably covers what is required of this development. Anything that may need to be extra, the Parks Department will look to obtain the rest of it in lieu cash.
Okay.
I don't know if that's the situation on this one, but.
Yeah, it looks like it is the developer's choice if they want to do land or fee. And I didn't know if there was a park, like, need in this area, or it's helpful to get it, or there's a park person stood up if you want to.
Council, Mayor, members of the board. Yes, in this case here, this is a longtime development plan that was put together between the development community, Mr. Bigelow primarily, and the city sat down together where parklands would be located in the general area. This has been planned for probably 15 to 20 years, not more. So it was planned to be a park location from the very onset.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Other questions from council members? Is there a motion on this item? On the first one, the annexation, G-1. Councilmember Palmer.
I'll make a motion approving the annexation by ordinance petition number CD 2024-008ANX by Bigelow Homes to incorporate approximately 28.84 acres of land and number two, directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for the first reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer and seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. Any further discussion on this item? Councilmember Wall.
I'm very happy to support this and the next motion that will be before us. Bigelow Homes has done great work in northwest Rochester, not just this neighborhood, but farther northwest neighborhood by Gibbs School. Neighbors are happy with their homes. I look forward to the great work they will bring to this neighborhood as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will echo what Councilmember Wall said. I had the opportunity a couple weeks ago to see the Red Hawk project that Bigelow is working with the county and First Homes on. And the objective there was really to see what the developer can provide at a very low cost, at slab-on-grade, split level. And those homes are now selling. I know that the land is not a part of it because it's in the land trust, but they're selling at the mid 200s. So I know, Mr. Bigelow, your company has experience with providing housing at a truly affordable place, so keep it up, and we're looking forward to what you have in the site. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of the annexation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. Passes unanimously. Motion on the zoning, G-2.
I'll move approval of the zone change number CD 2024-004ZC by Bigelow Homes LLC, changing the zoning designation on 38.8 acres from R1 to R2 and directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Wall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bigelow. Moving on to our reports and recommendations. H-1, we have a presentation on Chateau Theater Operating Agreement Renewal Addendum, and I would invite Josh Johnson to make the presentation here.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, Mayor, Councilmembers. Josh Johnson, Strategic Initiatives Director for the city. Tonight, we are here for a request to authorize a one-year renewal for Threshold Arts to operate the historic Chateau Theater from May 19th, 2025 through May 18th, 2026. A couple of items I want to just reflect on, a little bit of history here. So back in the summer of 2021, the city went out for a request for proposals for operation of the Chateau Theater. At the time, there was a working group that recommended three proposals. They brought those proposals back to a study session, and then out of that came the recommendation to engage with Threshold Arts to operate the Chateau Theater for a period of three years. We are coming up on three years on May 18th of 2025. So one of the questions would be, why are we requesting a one-year renewal right now? I think the most obvious is unless we renew it, the Chateau Theater will go dark after May 18th. The second answer that I would have is, you know, I'd say we're still trying to wrap our arms around what the Chateau Theater can be and what it is. We've learned a lot. When we acquired the property, the most recent use was as a bookstore. There was an interim period there where it was being used as an exhibit space, but not a flexible event space. So what we've realized over the last three years is there was a lot of deficiencies. The acoustics were bad, the electrical only had one, basically one setting. Lights were either on or off, so we had to do a considerable amount of light work, electrical work, plumbing work. The bathroom weren't ADA accessible. So we went out, received a grant, remodeled the two existing bathrooms, created a bathroom in the mezzanine to make that space more flexible, and then created another bathroom in the front parlor to make that more flexible. We've also updated the audio, the visual, the, you know, projector to make the space much more flexible. So I would say that, you know, and I want to acknowledge that Nora Anderson with Threshold Arts is in attendance. So I would acknowledge that we've had, you know, this has really been a partnership over the last three years. Threshold Arts has had to operate and be flexible and really be cooperative over all of those different facility improvements. Now, we, you know, next steps looking forward, we've engaged in a consultant to help us understand, you know, what can we do to maximize the facility even more? And those are things like, one of the primary ways that a theater can be, you know, fiscally, you know. you know, operable is liquor license. So one of the council's legislative priorities is to make a carve-out for the Chateau Theater to be able to have its own liquor license. Whenever you have events or weddings or concerts or anything, you know, all of that funding right now is actually walking out the door. So liquor license to make a facility sustainable is very, very important. Other things like the mezzanine that's off the skyway, that can't be utilized because of ingress, egress and bathroom location. It can't be utilized at the same time as the main floor. So that's an unoccupied, really, you know, we're not taking advantage of that space. Also maximizing the facility's capacity. The consultant that we're engaged with owns and operates, they're Granada Theater in Minneapolis. Very similar theater, very similar vintage, very similar size. They actually have a higher occupancy level than we have, even though our facility is bigger. So finding out ways that we can be creative, make improvements to fire life safety to create more occupancy. We also are analyzing the acoustics. We've done, we've put in some acoustic panels, but it's still not concert quality. So that impacts the types of concerts and events that we can have in there. So they're working with a consultant. We've identified some creative ways, some treatments that we can do to the ceiling to make it acoustically better without interfering with the historical, you know, characteristics of the ceiling that would involve like hanging ceiling panels, which we can do because it's a historic building. The other next steps is identifying facility improvements. We're working with our facilities team to understand what work needs to happen. Probably the most critical work going forward is there's some plaster on the ceiling and on the walls within the front parlor area that needs to be corrected. That will involve working with historic preservationists in order to analyze and complete that work. So we still have a long way to go. The plan is to work with a consultant, identify the facility plan to figure out when the timing is right for the next round of improvements. And then this would also be really the first year that Threshold Arts has been, would be able to operate the facility without interruption of other improvements. I failed to mention that we also went through a complete HVAC and cooling project during that period, which resulted in temporary heating. We also had temporary bathrooms. So that's all to say that Threshold Arts has been a great partner, has been very flexible. And that's why we're recommending a one-year renewal with Threshold as we work with consultants to then bring back a proposal and a presentation of next steps on ways we can better utilize the facility. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Questions at this point? Well, I'll start. So Mr. Johnson, if you can talk about, you're talking about kind of the next round of improvements. And I really appreciate what Threshold Arts has done. But I get a sense that we're kind of in this holding pattern and we really haven't as a city landed on, you know, what is our vision for the historic Chateau Theater? And so can you talk a little bit more about what this study? It sounds like the consultants are doing a study. What are you looking for in that? And maybe I'll just start and say what I'd like to see in it. I'd like to see us really looking at, you know, what are the capabilities of the site? This is a, in two years from now, this will be a 100-year-old property. It is on the National Historic Register. And so really, what can we do as we are now with improvements? But what are the, what's, what can we do if we really built it to a state-of-the-art facility for destination arts and culture? And with costs? And then as a council, we can kind of look at, you know, where it can be in that place. But I get a sense that we, there was a report about a decade ago and we didn't really act on it. And now we're kind of in this, let's program it, but we're really not like saying what we want for the future. I know that's long-winded, but if you want to respond, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. What we're looking for out of the consultant, and the reason why we selected this consultant is, one, she is, you know, developed, remodeled, opened up a very similar facility. And she did so during, you know, it was when she first opened, it was during COVID. Then she went through the George Floyd uprising. And then, and then she experienced significant street renovations. So she's not only had to operate and start up a historic theater, but she had to do it during construction. And as we're all aware, we're going to be experiencing a significant construction coming up. So what we're going to be working with her is to develop some business performance to understand what are the areas that we're not currently maximizing the space? So that could be food and beverage. She works with an independent food and beverage company to help operate and have people in her theater during times where there's not events. So that's how do we use the front parlor better? There's also different types of programming and entertainment that we could try to draw into Rochester that requires, you know, larger breakdown and setup of events. And that takes people. So it's really creating a business case and a business analysis of how do we effectively use each aspect of the Chateau? And that's the front parlor, that's the main space, that's the mezzanine areas, that's how do we better activate the alley? And maybe it's all for one event, but maybe we could have three separate events also happening at one time. Did that answer all your questions, Council President?
You touched on it. Let's see what my colleagues have to ask. Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I'll kind of follow up a little bit. I guess I, you mentioned, and it's important that you say there's work that's going to happen between now and May of 2026 so that we know better. And there's probably some sort of time schedule where the staff would get, move us towards like this is what we want to be. Or there's two options or three options. But I'm trying to understand that a little better. It sounds like it's very driven as you keep using the word theater. Is this like public space? Is this an activation goal? Is this an operating model? Maybe it's too early to be asking that. I think right now what's in front of us is extend from starting that in three months to starting that in 15 months.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Keen. The feedback that we've got, we're just working very preliminary with a consultant, is, you know, this space can be just about anything that we want it to be, you know, at all times during the year. So in order to do that, you just have to be able to program it. You have to have the, you know, the right, everything I keep saying, right acoustics, the right audio, the right visual, the right projector screens. So it's not just a theater. I mean, we can bring back recommendations. In order for it to be just a theater, there's going to need to be significant changes. And that alters what you can do, you know, by creating a theater, you're limiting what you can do for private events, for conferences, for, you know, we've had Leftino Fest in there. They've had wrestling programming in there. So I think our goal or strategy has been how do we make this as flexible as possible and engage the most broad community that we can?
Okay. Yeah, again, I just hope we have some way of both engaging the council, but also the community in those sort of discussions as we move that forward. I know that when we got into this, there was a lot of different, and some of them competing goals, but there was that activation for the community, there was that like third space or that space that others wanted to use. There was also the operating model to make sure that the city owns this, but was not like paying to do keys and calendar. Do we have any sort of metrics on how this has been running lately? Do we, I see a lot of anecdotal that we have this good event or we have these that are successful. But do we have any sort of like 3-1-1 numbers that say that the usage in there is 80% satisfied? Or much less? Do we have anything like that? Are we managing that? Are we looking to threshold to manage that? How does that work? Or where does the city come down saying, when we say this is working well, what are we basing that on?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Palmer, or Keen, I apologize. So what we have in the contract is KPIs. I think we need to understand once we go for the next renewal or next round of RFP, whatever comes out of the analysis, is are those KPIs what we want to be monitoring? Because currently it is effectively running how we approved the RFP. I would say it is, approved the RFP three years ago. And based on the KPIs that are in there, they're being met. I'd say that over 50%, you know, in this report, 50% of the activation is free events or walk-in events. I think we also need to prioritize, is that what we're looking for? Or do we want it to be more, you know, what types of events do we want more of? And that's going to impact, you know, the financial stability of the theater as well.
I know Ms. Steinhauser had wanted to add something, and I do have three council members that do want to speak as well, so.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Councilmember, Council President Chubring. Just wanted to build off of what Mr. Johnson was saying in terms of, you know, we've done work on the building. We've had an operator there that has done, has performance measures and obligations in the contract that she reports out on in terms of community events. What we've never really done is a true operational assessment. And as Mr. Johnson indicated, it's really an opportunity for us to understand what's the market opportunity in this facility? Are there, are there events that we hadn't anticipated that are a perfect fit for this facility? As well as events and types of uses that we say not going to work for this facility, given X, Y, and Z? And from there, be able to build a business plan around the facility based on one that is market-driven, based on some of the data that we know about the kinds of events that Ms. Anderson has been able to pull into the facility. And if that's the, what that builds out then in terms of a recommendation for what the future use of the facility should be, how do you want it to be managed and operated? So understanding the business case study and opportunities that we should try to embrace and other activities that we should let go because it doesn't make sense because it requires extensive capital investment? Or does it make sense for this market? Are resources that we'd have to put to it would be too, would not outweigh the cost-benefit analysis for the operation of the facility? And from there, then make a recommendation to you about how we, what's the best management model going forward? And if that management model going forward continues to involve an operator, then the process for either renewal or selecting and selecting and allowing for a transition time if appropriate and if applicable. This is the kind of business where you book business well in advance. So there are obligations booked at this facility that we want to make sure get honored. We have communicated to Ms. Anderson to not book beyond so that we are not putting ourselves in a situation outside of the extension. So but, but in doing so, you do miss the opportunity to book business two years out, for example. So all of that comes into play in this analysis that we want to bring forward to you. I think we indicated it would be about two months. Is that correct? So just trying to show the connectedness of where we were at with in terms of the building, getting it, making the approvals necessary, bringing on management, and now really trying to build out a business pro forma for the facility and bring that forward to help you understand what your obligations with this facility might be going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Steinhauser.
And just to clarify, just to close out on that, I am interested in making sure, I mean, I know the KPIs we have, but I'm also interested in, does the city have, like, the city, other entities that are coming to use the space? Do we get feedback that it's working? Do we get feedback that it's being run efficiently or equitably? And I want to make sure we as a city know how that is and not just turn that over with our space and say, you know, do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen. Moving on to Councilmember Wall. When did the city purchase the theater?
I want to, Councilmember, I want to say 2015.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
And this is no attempt to lay responsibility at the feet of anybody here. That predates virtually, I think, everybody in terms of leadership or staff responsibility. But if we've owned this thing for 10 years, how do we not have, I'm just asking, how do we not have a vision already of what this should be for us owning a pretty significant piece of property downtown?
If I might jump in and Mr. Johnson can add to it. So there was a community visioning process. I would say really great intent and a really genuine input from the community. But I would not say that it was grounded in economic realities.
That was the very expensive one.
A very expensive one. And we're trying to bring some economic realities to a future vision.
But that vision is a long time past.
There are still community members that would like to see that vision in that facility. We hear that on a regular basis. And we're trying to ground a future vision, give you the kind of decision points, the kind of information you need to make a decision on the future vision. Is it a community center? Is it a community center that also has a for-profit business, line of business? Is it a wedding venue? Is it a, is it a meeting venue? Is it a combination of both? Is it purely free events and cultural, you know, a cultural asset that we allow the community to use for, as you see, if they're over, more than 50% of the current use is free? Does that, is that the model that this council wants to see?
So I appreciate some of the nuance you have brought to that. Still frustrating. Do we believe that somehow a two-month analysis is going to lead us to a certain outcome or specificity that we'll be able to move forward with a vision in a year that will erase the uncertainties of the past decade?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember. I would say, you know, the vision of the Chateau is really contingent on the funding available for the Chateau. So, you know, all the improvements that we've made, we've made while funding, has been available to make them. So depending on what we want to see from a community in terms of a theater or a performance space is going to dictate the amount of funding needed to make that happen. So we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible while also providing the best experience and entertainment options for the community. And that's, I think, what this analysis is going to provide us is what can we do now? What can we do in two years, three years, four years, five years to continue to, you know, improve on the success of the Chateau?
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. And so tonight, we're here for the one month, for one-year extension. We talked about partnership and all the things that we've done to our partner that, you know, we've had COVID recovery. We've had temporary bathrooms. We've had construction. We don't know exactly what we're doing, but yet to give 57% for free. I mean, I have to applaud them for what they've done as a partner. I think they've been a great partner. And saying that, I think it comes to the city council's job to make this a priority because we've kicked this around a long period of time. And Mr. Johnson, funding, you know, do you have ideas where we're funding? Are you coming to us in two months with funding or, but how do you fund if you don't know what we're going to want to do?
Thanks, Councilmember Palmer. And that is the conundrum. And that's why we want to have support for the funding request that we're going to be making, especially working with our DMC partners. And I don't know, Ms. Steinhauser, if you had anything to add to that?
Yeah, thank you. So we, this is exactly what the DMCC board asked us for. They passed a resolution actually last year during the budget process that says if there is future capital ask for Chateau Theater to help them understand what is our operational and capital plan going forward as it relates to this facility? So DMC has been the funding source for the capital improvements there. We have leveraged that funding to get federal funds, as Mr. Johnson indicated, to do, make the restrooms handicap accessible or ADA accessible. And so in order for DMC to seriously consider future capital funding of improvements to this, they want to see what is our operational plan? What is our long-term maintenance plan for this facility?
So in my experience, that when we did Soldier's Field, DMC gave, I'm going to say $10 million to the city to do it. And what they said to us, you tell us what you're going to do. And so what I'm hearing is that what we need to do is come up with an idea of what we're going to do. I guess my suggestion would be that the city council does a priority of making this a priority of ours. But I would also like to see us maybe take seven city council members and, or six, yes, seven city council members, have us pick somebody to represent us on a committee and come up with what the community really wants. And maybe that's the way that we need to go with this, is the city councils to have some representation and say, okay, what does the community want? Let's have a deadline and let's move this ahead. Mr. Johnson, would that be helpful?
Thanks, Councilmember. I think any feedback is helpful. I'm going to look at Ms. Steinhauser and Ms. Elms to think about the logistics of that, but.
I agree. I think it's helpful to get feedback from the community. I would say we would want to put some parameters around that. The last time we did that, I think it set the wrong expectations for the community that people thought that the building itself could be renovated to the level where you could get a Broadway production here. And the reality is that you could not get a Broadway production to traveling production in this theater. A whole bunch of reasons why. Couldn't do it logistically spaced. Couldn't do it logistically, space-wise. Even if you could do it logistically, space-wise, the per-seat cost would price us out of the market. Like, those are the kinds of parameters that this, that we would want to, the community to understand that it, it, there are some things that absolutely would be off the table because the facility is not of the size and does not have the kind of physical attributes that certain, certain venues have that could compete for those kinds of uses. And so again, I would rather us try and find a way to do some engagement with the community rather than have a task force that guides what the community wants in this building because it's gotta be grounded in economic realities. It's gotta be grounded in the physical constraints of the building. And if, if money was not an option, absolutely, you could do a lot of renovation to this to make it desirable for different kinds of uses. But the reality is, we, money is constrained and we want to work within our constraints.
Well, just to finish up quickly, I, I appreciate the partnership that we've had. I think they've done a great job, better than I ever thought we could do. So I appreciate, especially with all the different items that we've thrown at them. I still think this should be a priority for the city council, and I think that the council could take it and move it ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Doring.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Councilmember Palmer on that. Just a, a couple of questions for some clarity. First, Mr. Johnson, I heard you say on numerous occasions tonight that the desires to make the space as flexible as possible for a variety of groups to participate in the space. And I would just urge in the review process to maybe rethink that a little bit. As a, as a lifelong participant of, in the performing arts, a space that pleases everyone is really no good for anyone. So I'm concerned about, about that aspect of, of, of this operating space. Secondly, I'm, I'm concerned hearing feedback from community groups, artistic groups who have utilized the space, who aren't coming back to the space, either because they had a bad experience operationally or the, the setup of the space wasn't adequate for what they wanted to do. So I'm wondering, in the review process, how those voices are going to be lifted up? I hear the importance of community engagement. I don't know how realistic that is in a two-month time period. So if you could explain a, a little bit how, how those groups are going to be contacted to get feedback for space, that would be helpful for me.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember. Two months is a very condensed timeframe. The engagement would have to be pointed stakeholder groups, people that have utilized it in the past, working, of course, with our, our partners at Threshold, to get their experience in the past. So the, the community is going to, the community group that's going to be, you know, reached out to are going to be, like I say, pointed partners that have utilized it or potential future users of the space. For us to do a much more broad community-wide, it would, it would obviously take much, much longer and the scope of work would be much bigger.
One follow-up. How are you going to determine who the potential future users of the space are when we don't have a vision for what the space is?
Good question, Councilmember. So this would be relying on the consultant's experience, you know, advertising, promoting, getting different types of, of events and entertainment options in.
Okay. Councilmember Fredericks?
Question is, can all the events that you... I'll bring my mic on. Can all the, can all the events we envision on holding at the Chateau Theater be hosted at the Civic Center currently?
Thanks, Councilmember. I mean, there, we, we look for, oh, I don't know if I can, I don't know how to answer that. Ms. Steinhauser, do you have a?
Council President, Councilmember, I would say it depends. If you're having a free puzzle night, it's probably not going to be hosted at the Civic Center based on the amount of cost and activation that you need in order to be able to pull that off. Having the smaller space like the Chateau be available for something like that is a much less costly way of turning on that building for a very low-to-no-cost event of that nature. So if you're talking about music and the arts potentially, but again, it depends on the artist and what, how their, their business model for how they operate. So I think you start to see on this dais how we don't have a vision yet because even here, we've heard different viewpoints of how people would like to see this operate. And so I would encourage you when you're in the next phases of your strategic planning and having your one-on-ones with the consultant, if this is a high priority for you, in whatever way that's a priority, that you provide some of that and that we encourage the consultant that we're working with to also reach out to council members to understand the parameters within which you're thinking right now so that when we bring something back to you, it is something that is valuable. The main thing that we're doing is trying to come up with a business case and operating model for something that has challenges in the sense of there was a vision, it was very costly, perhaps not achievable economically even in the operation of it, and a space that what we were able to come to a vision for in the RFP process was a very flexible space. It wants to be different based on this council's viewpoints. We would need to know that sooner than later.
Thank you, Administrator Zellms. Any other council members that want to be heard on this?
Yeah, I wasn't finished.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, thanks. I just think about it, the way I think about it, I guess, is we're trying to own and operate and maintain two spaces. Because if we can achieve everything we're trying to do there, there, why not own, operate, and maintain that space a little better and go to the market with that piece? We're gonna hemorrhage a lot of money getting it ready to do what we're trying to do. We're gonna hemorrhage a lot of money. I already know what we put in, heating and cooling. I mean, it was a boatload. And if it goes back, if we sell it back to the private sector, we're done hemorrhaging money there, and the person of the right interest, all of a sudden, when it's on them, they'll make it work. They'll figure out how to make it work. That's, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Fredericks. Councilmember Miller.
So just a question. As far as the coming back to us, is that the, the March study session where we see an hour on the most recent calendar?
Council, Council President, Councilmember Miller, we actually adjusted that during your study session in order to be able to come back to you at a reports and recommendations. And because we had a lot on the calendar, if you wanted to have a study session and ending at 6:30 is not critical to your life, we could do something to be able to get some feedback from you before May. Again, if money is no object, then we have a really different conversation to have with the operator. I'm fairly confident it is, but not certain, so.
I, I guess then as a follow-up, in, in May or whenever this comes back, should we look to the Granada Theater as a, a model of what's likely to be proposed? Since we've heard it's a similar-sized space, similar vintage, similar considerations. I mean, is that a model that if we want additional information, we should look at their calendar, their layout, to get a preview of that, to guide our, is, does this vision meet our vision?
Thanks, Councilmember Miller. I would say we're not trying to replicate what the Granada is doing, but I think in terms of just physical size, you know, it's located in, in, in a condensed downtown, it's in uptown Minneapolis. I think it's a good benchmark to see what type of, you know, variety of program that they have and, and how they make it work. So yeah, I think, I think it's good to draw inspiration and ideas, but we're not trying to replicate what they're doing up there.
And I guess that, that's my question then. As we think about this, as we think about the process, coming back in a couple of months, is, as we think about the lack of a specific vision today, what should we be looking at, right, to gain ideas or help set that vision when there's, there's not an established process? I, I mean, I, I think I would very much support Councilmember Palmer's recommendation that we, we have some additional input between the study session schedule and the meeting schedules to help guide this because I, I do share the idea that we, we don't have a clear vision that we're working towards to evaluate in two months from, from the council perspective.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Miller. I'd say one of the ways I look at it is, is, is what's missing. What are we hearing from our contingency that we don't have downtown? And there's tiers to our event centers. What is, what is the gap in the tiers right now between what the Chateau Theater is and what the Civic Center is? I also think, how can it be complementary to the other things that we have downtown? Right now, the Chateau Theater really acts complementary to things like Latino Fest or Social Ice, which is coming up, or Thursday's Downtown. And it provides that, that community benefit that, you know, if we were to sell it and lose all control, we, we would have less control over sort of that, you know, those free events, those walk-in events, the people that might just be here for an appointment that, you know, have history with the space and want to just walk in and see it. So I'd say, yeah, look at, look at what you think we're lacking in the market and use that as your, your guidepost.
Thanks, that's helpful. And just as a final comment, I will say that I, I do think that that is the uniqueness of the Chateau versus the Civic Center. It is, it is connected to our downtown. It is a, a space that people can walk in if there's a free event or even a ticketed event that has capacity. And I would applaud the Threshold Arts operation to provide a variety of events, both evening entertainment and adding on to our public space because I think it is a valuable public space of the City of Rochester.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller. So on our agenda, we are simply authorizing an extension of the, the contract that Threshold Arts has with, with us. Yet during this conversation, a lot of things came up. I think my sense is that what I'm hearing from my colleagues is we want more than a two-month study. We want a little more information on the, the capacity. And if there is a way to say, you know, this is the low end, this is the mid, middle, this is the high end, both from a, from an operational cost standpoint and a capital cost standpoint, and then also what are those funding models that we could potentially tap if we are looking at, you know, the top of the line? That, I think, may help us get a sense of, you know, some guideposts on this. And then also, I, I agree, and as other council members have with Council Palmer's suggestion that we have some kind of community engagement on this. It has been 10 years since we've done any visioning on the historic Chateau. I think now's a good time to do that. So I leave it to my colleagues. We have one agenda item, which is an, an extension. If my colleagues want to make a motion on that or, or any other items that's up to the body. Administrator Zellms.
Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, I do think it's really important that if you lengthen this process, you should expect that a year of a operator extension's probably not enough. So perhaps the staff could come back with ideas for how you could provide your input within that timeframe. And if that's not enough information when we bring it back to you in May and you want more robust engagement, then you might make that decision then. But every month you wait, it's probably another year that you are operating with the current condition. Because we have to get it into a budget cycle, we have to get in front of DMC, we have to understand what the cycle is for if you're going to make the improvements. You have to make the improvements, if, if any, and then you, you end up moving forward. So if, I'm not hearing that everyone wants robust engagement. Councilmember Palmer talked about having a council member, I think, work with the consultant. I'm suggesting that you have opportunities now, perhaps we have the consultant reach out to each of you, you provide some of your feedback, you have people that you think they should reach out to, you could provide that. And that you share also, if this is a major priority, rising to the level of a strategic priority, that you share that during your one-on-ones with the consultant that's doing the strategic priorities at, at that strategic level of why, like, what you would want to see happen with the Chateau. You can do that. And I mean, if you want to lengthen the process, that's fine. I just want you to understand the implications of that.
Ms. Steinhauser, did you have something to add?
Sure, I just, I, I think what Administrator Zellms said is absolutely on point. I would also say that what we can do is go back and look at what's covered under the current contract. And if there's something missing, we can ask for what would that additional analysis cost and what would the time impact be to the project? I, I do really appreciate wanting to engage the community, but as councilman, I, I too have a background in the arts. And as Councilmember Doring said, it, while it's important to get the public engagement, what's more important is to understand from potential users, people who are going to book the facility for their use. Does the use meet their needs? Does it meet their needs? Does that translate into an operational opportunity for the facility that translates into a good business plan? So I don't want to say, we don't want to do community engagement. We want to do chartered community engagement around those potential groups who are likely to be the book of business that we would go after because that is what is going to tell the better story of what should be the vision of this facility and how it gets used.
Thank you, Ms. Steinhauser. Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I, I think it's time I get a, a motion on the floor. I'd like to authorize the Chateau Theater Operating Agreement Renewal Addendum effective May 19, 2025 to May 18, 2026.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Miller. Councilmember Keen, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess a couple of points. I, I do get a little distressed listening to this discussion because we, we come into 2025 with a lot of execution responsibilities. And if, if every time we get something that comes in front of us for action A and we decide to make it another priority, we're gonna have trouble staying with our, our top things. Chateau has always been a difficult property for the city to own. As Councilmember Fredericks points out, we are competing with ourselves in many areas. We mentioned the Civic Auditorium, but there's the Civic Theater, too. I've always thought that the Chateau is much more of a unique location and square footage on the heart of the city. And there's things we're trying to leverage that way. And I think that's a better direction here. If you did end up taking this idea of like the lowest, you know, the, the cheapest middle and then the more the high end, it's, it's a decent way to go. But I think that low end should consider, we should have a process to, in the past, we've looked at turning over public property to the private sector. We did it with the Armory back in 2016. It's a big, difficult process, but in that case, we did find an outside group that wanted to kind of activate that space. We'll all like grade it differently whether it worked well or not. But I think that is something that should be on the horizon is that, is it, is it something that the public has to, has to own? I remember the time that we, the city did buy this, and it was the distress time of that it was, you know, what's gonna happen to the Chateau on the heart, on the Peace Plaza? And it was the early DMC days. And I, I would still question to say, was it an emotional decision or was it a good, like, practical, the city needs this because? And I, I think it's something we have to, we may have to wrestle with in 2025.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wall. Ultimately, I will support the motion. And I'm thankful to Administrator Zellms and Mr. Johnson for some back and forth we had over the past couple of days. Didn't satisfy all the questions that I have, especially a condensed time to try and put together a vision. It seems like we're putting a, a lot in the basket of, of one person, a consultant, who comes to us, not, not perhaps appreciating what the Chateau Theater has meant to some in the City of Rochester, not me, I don't have a big history with it, but some, some people do. I am just hopeful that we're not sitting here in one year with, at about the same place that we are now, as we have the past nine years, I guess. So I would love to move this forward. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Palmer.
Well, originally, the city council, years and years and years ago, voted not to buy the Chateau, and then it became a bookstore. And it was owned by a private firm for a long period of time. I don't think this is long enough. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend the, the motion to make the end date December of 2026.
Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion.
The, the rationale for that is I think we're, we're trying to push this too much, and I think that we need to move it ahead. I don't see, you know, six more months would be very helpful to come up with an idea. It gives a little bit of, it gives a lot of, of time for the current person, our partnership that's there, to keep planning ahead instead of saying, oh, jeez, I'm, I'm gonna drop dead on this date. It also gives us that time to, to influence other, or get other influence. Part of the problem I have is I'm not, I'm not a theater person. And, and so asking me about theaters is goofy. And so I don't really want to, to do that. But there's a lot of people out there, and I think we forget a really good story, and that is a civic theater, which was, should have gone bankrupt and, and it didn't. And they fought back. And I believe that they're now at 309ths a, a year. So I, I think there's lots of opportunities. I don't want to be frustrated, but I think that we need to give it enough time to make the right decision. So that's why I make the motion to extend it to December of 2026.
Councilmember, did you extend it to December 18, 2026? Or did you give a date?
I did not give a date. It just, it's December. It's just December 2026.
As a seconder, I'm going to suggest December 31st.
I, I will accept that amendment to that motion.
Okay, discussion on the amendment. Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, we, we've got the staff that's been working on this. Is there any reaction or reflection on this?
Thanks, Councilmembers. We would like to confer with our operator. Give me a word to that recommendation, but, you know, we see no problem from our side of it.
All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, all opposed, say nay. It seems to have passed four at least.
Sounds like seven, zero.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear much. Was it seven, zero? Do we want to roll call, or?
No, it's good.
It was seven, zero. Okay. All right, on to the main men, the main motion. We have a motion amended on the extension of the Chateau Theater Agreement to December 30, from May 19, 2025 to December 31, 2026. Any further discussion on this? Mayor Norton?
Thank you. If the person that we're extending should choose not to, or should choose to end at a time earlier, do you, is the contract written as such that there's a way for the two of you to agree to discontinue?
Council President, Mayor, Councilmembers, I, I can try to answer that. It's, it's a good question. Usually, we don't do business this way, but this is maybe a, in some respects, a minor enough of a shift where we can do it with some level of confidence. But it is important to recognize that what you're approving tonight, if you go forward and approve this motion, has not been specifically agreed to by the other party. And we will sort through that in the next few days. If for some reason, there is a need to come back to you, because there's not been a meeting of the minds, we would, we would do that. Otherwise, we would also, at the same time, evaluate the terms to see if it gives the parties enough flexibility that we have an agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler-Craig. So with the motion is on the table, and back to the main motion, and I, I really have to echo a lot of what my colleague, Councilmember Wall, said. I think we're looking for some kind of community engagement, we're looking for some kind of vision, we're looking for options. I think it's a little bigger than maybe you thought coming in here. We've now extending the time, and so I think we'll, and, and to Administrator Zellms' point, those of us that have passion about how the historic Chateau Theater moves forward, please talk to our, our strategic planning partners on that, and we'll move forward. So if there is no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll take a six-minute break.
Recording in progress.
So we are continuing on our reports and recommendations. We are at H2, which is the Regional Sports and Recreation Complex, Real Estate Acquisition and Phase One Planning. It looks like we have a team to present on this. So Ben, are you leading us off here?
So?
I will give, I will give it a start, and yes, many teammates to help as we go, especially if there's questions following the presentation. But thank you, Council President and Council and Mayor. Walk through just a few slides here to discuss the, maybe, the three requests for council action, if you just want to. There we go, perfect. So first one would be to discuss the purchase of the property for the Rochester Sports and Recreation Complex. Second requested action would be to direct the city and design team to continue with the first phase of the complex, focusing on the outdoor amenities. And then third, to have us continue exploring future funding options and partnerships so that we can realize the full vision of the complex. So we'll just grounded in a little bit of history here of the project. So the first time that this current extension of the local sales tax was brought before the council was in January 2022. That was the full local sales tax renewal, which the Regional Sports and Recreation Complex was one of those projects. It was approved by the council members and forwarded on to the state level. At that time, in the spring of 2022, action was not taken, the bill was not approved at the state level. So that left the local sales tax as unrenewed at that point. It came back before the council in January 2023. Again, reaffirmed, same list of projects, same dollar amounts, all those things just carried over from '22 into '23, went up to the state legislature again at that point. Then at the local level, we also, during that year, conducted community engagement and gaps analysis and other things here locally. That was going on at the same time that the information was up at the state legislature, and those things were being heard. Ultimately, in May 2023, it was approved at the state level, came back to the local voters in November of that year, and approved the local sales tax renewal at that time. Very shortly thereafter, and that'll be our first action we'll consider this evening, is the exploration into the site. So we had a team of city staff members and others who began looking at sites. We began with a list of 15-plus different locations around Rochester that fit at least the minimum criteria of having about 80 acres or larger that could handle the complex as it was imagined in, in the summer of '23. We took that list of 15, have brought it down to a final list of three, and at that point, engaged with civil engineering to really make sure that the complex would fit on that site, investigate other things like infrastructure costs, fees, begin negotiating on purchase with the agent that we brought in at that time as well, so that we could, again, have those final three that we could evaluate more completely. Couple other items that are on that timeline there as well is the operations team. We brought in a operator who could help us through all of this planning phase. They started in March of 2024, going through confirming and working on the market study and developing an actual pro forma, so we know how the facility could operate each year. Late 2024, we brought in a design team to help us as we work through the initial design concepts, and also a construction manager at risk, which was kind of the final piece to assemble the team there so that we could get cost estimates and really have all the data we needed to continue to progress with the project. So the first action slide on that for the, the site selection, and of those three sites that were brought back, again, did an in-depth analysis of each. And the one that we are bringing forward this evening to recommend would be the Seneca Site, Mid Seneca, it's called. And this would be, you know, southeast part of Rochester. And the reasons why we feel like this is why we believe it's our, our recommended site. And there's a lot of things that we really like about this site. It gives us the space that we need, not only to see the full vision of the facility built, but also gives us some other space that we could bring in some complementary things on to that site. It's easily accessible along very near highways, Highway 63, Highway 52, also not far from Interstate 90, so getting to the site would be easy to do. It, when you add up all of the infrastructure and costs that go into it, including the purchase, it is the most affordable of the three sites that we were looking at. And again, incorporates a variety of ways to get to this site. It's along where the future Willow Creek Trail will run along the south end of town and be able to connect right into this location, so you can get there not only by vehicle, personal vehicle, public transportation, as well as bicycles or other things to get into the site. The other thing that we like about this site is that it's a mix of existing amenities around, be that restaurants, hotels, retail, but also opportunity for expansion in that area. So we see it being a great mix of that as well. Moving on to the second item, and a couple more slides here on the design direction that we're heading toward at this point. So as we brought in the design team and the construction manager at risk, really started to get the estimates. And knowing that our budget had been approved at the state legislature and by the local voters for $65 million, we were faced with the very apparent reality of, you know, what can we actually build with $65 million? And we consider that also needs to include the purchase, infrastructure upgrades, a lot of things that a person attending the facility won't see. There are just things that were part of that cost as well. And we really saw three options. First option being, try to do a mix of an indoor and outdoor type facility, and quickly ran into roadblocks with that option. As we developed, we had our operator team, as well as our city teammates, working to develop a operating budget, what that would look like year over year, and it would require, we believe, a significant subsidy to run a facility like that. We also felt there were challenges with being able to have that regional impact. It'd be hard to host tournaments. It, perhaps, say it's four outdoor fields and four courts, wouldn't really be that attraction to have a regional impact. And, and, you know, just would struggle in both of those ways and not be what ultimately the community was looking for in this facility. So with that being ruled out, we then left with two options. Those options being first, not first, but those two options being, one, an indoor-focused facility, so that would be basketball courts, the other amenities that had been identified during the community engagement process, as well as our gaps analysis and market study. And we'll talk about that in a minute. Then the third option being the outdoor focus, where it would be the outdoor fields, pickleball courts, other things that would be built out that were part of, again, that community engagement and gaps analysis that was done in 2023. So this is a list of those amenities, again, both on the indoor and outdoor side. As you'll see, as we walk through it, you, you've likely read through your packets already, but know that we're, you know, bringing forward that recommendation of starting on the outdoor side. Those amenities would be eight diamond sports fields, so baseball, softball, two artificial turf soccer fields, 12 pickleball courts, and then a lot of things that we built around that, that would make for a great tournament site, also make for those varied amenities that our community could enjoy. Trails, outdoor basketball courts, playground, accessible playground, other support facilities, restrooms, all those types of things, parking, easy ways in and out of the facility. And that would be on the outdoor side. On Phase Two, the indoor side would be those eight basketball courts, some indoor turf training space, other things that were identified by the community, the walking track, multipurpose community rooms, sports performance. community rooms, sports performance or sports medical partner, other things that had bubbled up as interest and gaps that we currently have that would be fulfilled that way. And then again, when the entire complex was built, we would need more parking and more ways to get there, so that would all be added in during the second phase. A couple slides here of some images of the different type of amenities, artificial turf diamond fields, the pickleball courts, large playground, again, these are just images of other projects that have happened around the region across the country in the last few years. Again, large playground, outdoor basketball, dog park, trails, again, things that we could see in this outdoor facility. So getting back to those two options, what our team has put together, what we've identified along with our operator and others of what we feel the opportunities and challenges would be, we're starting with the indoor-focused program. Again, it would have that community appeal be available year-round. We think getting to eight courts is a differentiator that creates that regional impact that we're looking for. It also potentially, if we went this direction, that outdoor development could happen in smaller chunks, phasing would be a little bit easier than, you know, at some point just building the entire building. On the challenge aside, it would, construction would take a bit longer, so it would extend that opening day timeline. Some of, there's more variables when it comes to the indoor facility. We don't have a medical partner that we've come to terms with, for example, or a sports performance partner, or exactly what do some of those other support amenities around the eight courts of the anchor of that building look like? So we would need to get that sorted out, get the partnership discussions accelerated as quickly as possible, so we'd really know what needed to be and what wanted to be on the indoor side of that. When we developed the pro forma, we're starting with the indoor-only facility, it quickly became apparent that it would be difficult to operate at a break-even level. It would require some subsidy in order to run that facility. Less economic impact, as we evaluated again what other facilities are around the region, around the state of Minnesota, there are more indoor, like basketball, volleyball, wrestling-type facilities that are running large events right now, so we would, it would be perhaps, we feel, more difficult attracting some of those tournaments to come in Rochester, starting up new ones. It would be a longer on-ramp to have the economic impact that we would desire to have in this facility. And the cost estimating that we received from our construction manager at risk, this was about an 85,000, 88,000 square foot building, so eight basketball courts takes up the vast majority of that square footage, having enough support facilities around there and trying to make sure we could have the community rooms, indoor play, other things that were important, that we feel are still important to this project. It would be very tight in the building in order to try to deliver as much of that as possible. On the outdoor side, again, that number eight, that quantity of eight is, we feel is that differentiator, and eight diamond sports fields would be a differentiator for us. In fact, we would be the only facility in Minnesota or any of the adjoining states that would have a full-size, eight full-size baseball fields that could be convertible down to smaller-sized baseball or softball. Other facilities around the area of artificial turf, they're a mix of the small and large-sized fields. We would have the ability to really customize that size and experience for whatever tournament we were going to host here in Rochester. It would have a lot of the other community assets that were identified during the gaps analysis and community engagement, the pickleball courts, rectangle artificial turf fields.
Get a little closer.
Yep, sorry about that. It gives us opportunity to extend that engagement period where we can go and work with those partners in order to figure out what that indoor facility would look like. We feel over the next few years it'll be a less competitive construction environment. There's a lot of building, construction planned, as we all know, during the next few years here, but on the outdoor side of the artificial turf and other things that would be going, not quite as much of that as planned in the city of Rochester, so we feel that would be a positive for us. And as we looked again at that pro forma and the operating arrangements, this would be much more likely to break even, have a net positive revenue, not require as much subsidy. You know, we heard that during the open comment period this evening about making sure we're trying to be financially sustainable, and we feel starting on the outdoor side puts us in a better position for that, as well meets that regional significance that's important for the sales tax projects. The pro forma actually estimates more people coming to the facility for the outdoor facility versus the indoor, even though the outdoor is a seven-to-eight-month-type facility, just with the number of tournaments and number of teams we could have at the complex on a weekend, as well as all those community members and visiting teams who would be here, you know, during the week, community use, all those types of things, we'd have more impact on the outdoor side. Challenges, obviously, state of Minnesota during the winter, right, can be challenging, so this would be a likely seven-to-eight-month season, but would give us the opportunity to press that as far as we could with the artificial turf and lighted fields, as long as the weather was reasonable, players would get out there and play. Outdoor focus, potentially, again, when we talk about those partnerships and fundraising, it may be more difficult, we believe, to sell some of those fundraising things versus selling those things for an indoor facility. Couple other items just to talk about here quickly on the program. So we definitely recognize that the community needs, the gaps analysis and community engagement really wanted both the indoor and outdoor components of this facility. So as we've worked with our estimators and construction manager to develop what this program could look like, we're continuing to explore ideas, what can we do to offer some indoor recreation amenities that can be available during the wintertime? You can see a couple images on the screen here of bubble-type facilities, there's also fixture of fabric facilities, think the tennis courts at the rack, there's other ways potentially that we could find a way to offer some sort of indoor recreation, whether that be cover some pickleball courts, perhaps a basketball court, a small patch of turf, things like that, to again be able to offer that amenity. So we do, we have and will continue to discuss with our design team and construction team about how we could make that a reality. Also looking at the other facilities that we do already have in Rochester, how can we continue to maximize the usage and programming at those facilities? And that's something we, you know, continue to explore and work towards, try to be better stewards of all the facilities that we do have in Rochester. And then the third action, just one slide here on this action would be, what can we do to be able to realize the full vision of this facility? So these are a few items that we've identified as things to continue to explore on ways to expand our budget. As I mentioned before, we have had some initial conversations with private organizations or private nonprofits about coming in and partnering in this facility. I think when we look again back at the property that we're looking to purchase, it is a property for 160 acres, has some additional space than what we need for this facility. Are there ways to utilize some of that acreage that can come back and help fund some of this investment into a phase two? So again, items that we've began exploring, had some initial conversations on, and if this were all to move forward, would, you know, fast, try to move on this and develop more concrete ways that we can get to funding both the indoor and outdoor side of this complex. So again, the three requests for council action to consider would be purchasing the site, continuing moving the design in the direction of the phase-one outdoor focus, and then directing the city team to continue on exploring ways that we can expand on the budget and realize as much of the full vision of this facility as possible. Those are the end of my slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Councilmember Fredericks.
Yeah. Early on, you mentioned complimentary pieces to the sports facility. What do you envision as complimentary pieces?
So we've, it's hard to limit that answer, actually. I think, you know, you look at the items like more in the entertainment realm, whether that be restaurants, whether that be the hotels for lodging where people would stay, those could be complimentary. We've had some other groups in town reach out about, could we develop, could we partner on something to offer more indoor play, for example, would be one. We've had a couple of the offshoots of like your entertainment golf type of facility that there are around the country as well. Could something like that be adjacent to this facility and complemented in that way? Those would be a few of the initial conversations we've had.
Good thoughts. One other question, it isn't really a question, it's just for clarification. Mr. Spindler-Craig, since the voters have approved this project and we are already collecting sales tax money, does the city council have any other option but to proceed with the project? And that's in light of all the emails and different things that have been flying around and hubbub we've been hearing. This is set in motion, we're already collecting the money for it. Our option is to proceed with a sports complex, is that correct?
Councilmember Fredericks, mayor, councilmembers, I think the short answer is yes, you are obligated to proceed in that direction.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Mr. Bolt, thank you very much for all your guidance and professionalism. I know you work really, really hard on that. You know, we worked hard together on the presentations to the sales tax extension, which was a hard thing to do, and you really led some good leadership of that, so thank you for doing that. I know it wasn't easy. We've got the chamber here today, and the chamber helped us with the sales tax extension, and there was four items on the sales tax extension that made it work. There are some groups who did not want to participate in helping us with that sales tax dollars, and that's unfortunate. But you went through the timeline here, and we started this in 2022, right?
Correct.
And one of the things that I learned from you is that the artificial turf is important for the spring and the fall and during like July rainstorms. Can you explain that to me a little bit?
Yes, thank you for the question. Yeah, the artificial turf, again, one of those differentiators we feel is, believe is very important for this facility. It creates it to be a bit more weatherproof. When a storm rolls through the area, we break during that storm. Once the front is through, we've had our 30 minutes since the last lightning, we're ready to get going again. So yes, this facility would be one that has artificial turf, lights, so we can play into the evening, you know, after the sun sets and make it a facility that is more reliable, when you can come into facilities with natural grass and, excuse me, infield and those types of things. If you get washed out, it could take several hours to recover that and get back to playing conditions, where on that artificial turf surface, we're able to get going again pretty quickly.
And I'm going to assume that you wanted to build both the indoor and the outdoor facility, and saying that, I'm assuming that you made that decision, your recommendation is let's do the fields first and do a really good job of that, and then work our way to do a really good job of the indoor. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yes, thank you for the question. I think as we've looked at this, and I acknowledge the, you know, history we had sharing sales tax presentations and those types of things, creating that information out there, it is really the city team's desire to see this full vision realized, and we feel that getting a great phase one out there that's successful and that is great for our community, creates that regional impact, works financially, that will make it more realistic to see the full vision realized and get to phase two, and again, that full vision.
And this is really an economic driver, the Park Board hasn't been involved with this, have they?
We have informally shared information with the Park Board over time. Yes, we felt like this was living at the city council level, I guess would be my answer to that.
Mayor Norton. Allison, did you, I mean, Administrator Zales, did you have something?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to add something to the question about wanting this to be a fully successful indoor experience in phase two. What maybe was missed in the presentation, if you weren't looking at the first slide that said many more amenities in phase two of an indoor, the in, putting indoor first based on the total cost, you do not get the full vision that the community put forward. And so that's one of our concerns, is if you were to put that first, you would get about half of what the full community vision is because of the significant cost of purchase and all of the onsite and offsite preparation that is necessary. So I just want to point that out. If you looked at the slide that had the indoor second, there's a lot more amenities in that, and it's expensive. And if you did the indoor first, you have maybe roughly $40,000 to build that, and what it wants to be is more like 60 to 65, excuse me, $40 million, and what it wants to be is more like a 60 to 65 million-dollar indoor experience if you're going to actually achieve the vision that the community put forward.
Okay, I have Councilmember Doring and then Mayor Norton.
President Schubring, I have a procedural question before anything else. Is it your intention to take this as a three-part motion, or are we, are we going to vote on one, separate, then two, then three, or are we going to vote on the whole thing at one time?
Councilmember Doring, it really depends on what the council wants to do, and when, we are now in the question and answer period, so council members are asking questions, getting clarity on the issues. When we get to that motion, it's up to the council to make that decision.
I was simply trying to figure out how to frame my question, so you can come back to me in a few.
Are you, are you there for your questions then, too?
No, I'll be, I'll be back.
Okay. Mayor Norton.
So I have a number of things to say, and I'm wanting, I'm wanting to do this procedurally correctly. So do you just want Q and A, or can we talk about things and ask questions at the same time?
I will be very flexible as your presiding officer here.
Thank you. So there's a couple of things. One, I want to clarify a point that was made earlier, and I've heard it now said twice, and I'm clarifying it because I got a call from one of our legislators who asked me to clarify it if it was said, and it was. There is zero tax requirement for regional fulfillment, zero. She went and talked to the tax people, and so we have to quit saying that. There are sometimes with bonding, there are sometimes with other programs for taxes, there are not. So she asked me, she, I wasn't going to say anything, but since that comment was mad, I want, I told her I would repeat it, so there's that. So one of the issues that I do want to talk a little bit about is this indoor/outdoor, the indoor versus outdoor. One of the concerns I have, and I want to know if you've thought about this, the community wanted both, they wanted everything, they wanted things you haven't even talked about, like curling and soccer, right? I mean, they wanted everything, so we know that. My concern with the outdoor is that it's primarily competitive. The indoor, if we just do outdoor, based on some of what I've heard from our legislators, I'm concerned, and I guess I'm wondering if you have thought through whether there will be any interest in the legislature with funding one more cent for this if we only do outdoor first, because I'm hearing a concern about that by some of them, and so I'm wanting to know if you thought that through.
Who wants to take that one? Administrator Zales.
Council President, mayor, councilmembers, I take the hard ones. I just want to point out that your resolution, I feel like it's important to point out that our resolution did talk about regional impact, sales tax in committee did ask about regional impact, and the committee hearings that I testified at, there were legislators that were asking about regional impact, and that gets asked of every sales tax that goes before the legislature, whether it's in law or not, they ask it, and so I just think it's really important to share that. And we have thought about it, there's a number of different things on the list, that's why we're saying, don't just say we're doing phase one. If you want to get to phase two more quickly than, while Ben and I are alive, then we need to know that there's impetus from the city council, the body, to continue to pursue that, and if there's concerns about anything on that list, then we should take them off the list. But currently, the legislature is in a moratorium on bringing forward new sales taxes. They aren't in session, so I'm not sure that they're going to be able to be successful at bonding in the near term, but we need to be able to share what the vision is and share that the community wanted something more. I'm just saying, if you have, if you move forward with the indoor, though, you're not getting what the community vision was. The ability for that dollar to go that far, and what we actually approved in 2022 when this started... approved in twenty twenty-two when this started focused on an, an outdoor complex with supportive indoor features and the community dreamed larger than that. So if our legislators are concerned about that, we also can't use sales tax or many other taxes for operations. And so we heard from the community and from others that we didn't want to have a significant cost to be able to subsidize the vision going forward. If the council feels differently about that, that would be helpful to know. If you're okay with a five hundred thousand dollar to million dollar a year tax levy commitment going to a future indoor facility or if you want to move forward with indoor now at about half of what the community was asking for, knowing that that's a ballpark of what your operating costs would be, we would need to hear that. And that's a council decision, not a legislator decision. They, they may not be supportive, but you need the entire legislature to be supportive in order to move something forward like bonding or sales tax unless they change the sales tax process in the committees that they've been having over the summer and allow cities to do that locally.
Point of order.
Uh, Councilmember Wall.
Was not the sales tax bill passed by the legislators focused primarily on an outdoor facility for the sixty-five million?
Uh, Administrators Elms, are you going to take that one?
Council President, Councilmember Wall, what you put forward to the legislature and where it actually got hearings was actually in the twenty twenty-three session. In twenty twenty-four, the House did not have, hear any sales tax bills. So we were only in hearings with the Senate and it was pretty much the same thing that we had put forward in twenty twenty-two that got conference, but then they didn't find agreement. So the bill that we had brought forward, which was, we provided you again today, talked primarily, and the dollar amount that we were looking at was primarily about outdoor. We thought maybe we could get something that would be indoor based on the very conceptual report that came in twenty twenty-three, which is about a five percent design report, no construction manager at risk, no site selected, no clarity on what offsite and onsite improvements were, a low number on purchase price. And what the legislature talked about in the committee hearings that existed, which were primarily in twenty twenty-three and only Senate in twenty twenty-four, was what the council advanced and had been continuing to move forward.
And for clarity, because I-
Uh, I, I want a little bit more order as the-
I have the floor.
So, uh, Mayor Norton, I, I, and I've asked this at other meetings when we have discussions that are very robust, which I really appreciate. I think it's really important that we speak to the chair, to not across the dais. Thank you. Mayor Norton.
I don't know who to look at now. I was looking at everybody before. So, um, so I'm going to raise some issues then. Um, and, and I will just say, when we went to the legislature the first time and the second time, it was with a dollar amount and a, a vision. It was not specifics. Those were not detailed until after it got approved. So the legislature has listened to the community input, our legislators and several of them. And Chair Schubring, you were there, expect this to be focused, at least one of them very strongly, on what the community said when we finally got to that process in twenty twenty-four after the bill passed. So, um, I'm just saying, if we, if we, if our own legislators do not think we have done due diligence, they may choose not to support it the next time we go forward. So I was, I'm just saying, we just need to be aware of that. Um, so I'm going to reiterate just a couple of things. I'll do it really quick. Um, location, um, in my opinion and the opinion of many people that have spoken forward, this isn't the right location. It's too far out and awkward to get to. I have, you know, I had a favorite site of the, some of the ones that were selected. I am just going to say it's not the staff's fault. It's no one's fault here. But I am deeply disappointed that people that own funds or own land are more concerned, and I know it's capitalism, but about their own profit than they are about leaving a legacy of profit for the community. And I just feel like some of the land prices, um, didn't weigh that option about how important for the community that legacy would have been. Um, so I'm just really disappointed that those central locations were not selected because I think it would have been the best, had the best impact on our community. One of the reasons I say that is about the availability and accessibility, which we heard at the beginning and I agree with, that folks are looking for us to replace the YMCA, the Y or the family Y, it used to be called, and then the YMCA. They want those facilities that people can walk into, which is my concern, indoor, outdoor, for basketball and exercise. And I think many of them thought rightly or wrongly that that was part of the vision. And when it is far away, not accessible to people, it makes that much more difficult, um, for them, as well as this concept that was raised earlier about accessibility for people with disabilities, which, you know, I, I respect, um, that and, and at risk youth, which, you know, that was a, a very wonderful comment and thoughtful comment that was made about that. Um, we do tend to be focusing more on competition. Um, and I understand that's a model that will be sustainable, but I don't think it's what the community had in mind was a competitive. It's, it was part of our discussion. Yes, I will agree with that. I do not think that was really what was in the mind of a lot of the community members who wanted something they also could have used. And when you say phase two and phase one lasts fifteen years, um, of sales tax extension, then that concerns me that phase two is so far out. I mean, our kids in kindergarten will be in college. So I, I do worry a little bit about that. So, um, I'm hoping that this council will seriously consider the indoor, outdoor option with a bubble if you can't afford a full process. I think that option, not ideal, but I think it will give the community access to that space that they want despite its distance, which again, I prefer it to be in town. But if we can't have it in town, then there's that. So we talked about phasing, um, again, the phasing, ten, fifteen years of phasing to wait for phase two really concerns me. So I just, I wanted to say that. Um, I, I also wanted to say, um, that doing something competitively for large groups is great. And I think I understand the rationale for that. But again, please make sure, please make sure that we don't wait fifteen or twenty years for the indoor option and things that are for this, the people who voted for this and who live in this community now. Don't make them wait fifteen years for phase two. Find a middle ground if you can.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm going to pick up and I, I will go to, uh, Councilmember Doring in a, in a minute, but pick up on the, the community aspect. And I know, uh, Councilmember Palmer, uh, mentioned the, uh, the sales tax extension, the, uh, successful campaign, uh, that, uh, the chamber was a part of. I remember that campaign and it did talk about that over forty percent of the sales tax dollar is paid for by visitors coming here. So I do understand that visitor aspect of it. But we also know that over fifty percent of that sales tax dollar is paid for by residents of this community. So I, I'd like to hear how you see the balance of the regional sports, sports tourism, uh, with the needs of the community and, and, and speak beyond the, the regional sports center, how holistically, uh, the, uh, the, the rec facilities that we have here in Rochester, how, uh, how can we improve the access for residents here? And when I say, uh, access, I mean, I know there's a big piece of it that, uh, clubs provide. There's value in that. But how do we also then provide that open access as well? So I know it's a loaded question, but, uh, I know you're the guy to answer it.
I will do my best. Thank you for the question. I would say, first of all, it all comes down to how you program the facility. I mean, having a tournament quality facility is also a great thing for our community members. If we're programming in that time where it's low cost or free access to the site. So what can we do on, you know, the, the weeknights, for example, or afternoons, um, during the week when we wouldn't be looking to run a tournament, but we would be able to have local teams playing games there, uh, have drop-in time at our other rec facilities, whether it be the National Volleyball Center or the Recreation Center. We have open play times, um, open volleyball up at the volleyball center on Friday and Sunday nights are packed. There's, um, every court is full of community members out there playing volleyball. Um, I envision that, and we've worked, talked with our operator as well as our internal team about how can we again, program that facility. We can run local leagues there. It can be just your recreation level leagues, great organizations like Rochester Youth Baseball or Rochester Youth Softball Association. They're doing programming for, um, just those beginner kids, T-ball, uh, you know, kindergarten age kids, all the way up through the high school aged kids that are our community members or in surrounding communities that are participating in those. So to me, it's about how do we program it and schedule it and build that into the, uh, weekly and, and monthly schedule for the facility to be able to offer those, um, local options for, for our community members. I think another component of that is the support facilities that we would build around the sports fields. So we would have the playgrounds, pickleball court, a lot of, um, a lot of enthusiasm around expanding what we have in our system for pickleball courts. A lot of community members are participating in that. Their numbers are growing. So that's a great local amenity that would be available. Again, the playground, the trails, just the, kind of the, the green space, the, the passive recreation that comes with having a facility like this where, um, again, folks can come through on their bicycles or as a, you know, family or group of individuals and be able to enjoy the spaces like that, just at a passive recreation level.
Okay. I have one more question, then I will turn to my colleagues. Uh, can you talk about, uh, how the, um, the site selection as well as starting with outdoor will enhance our ability to attract, uh, potential sponsor, sponsors to then help with the, the bricks and mortar?
So it's been my experience and the research that we've, um, been looking through with our operators and facilities. We've gone to facility tours around the region as well to see how they're operating and what's working successfully for them. And being a facility where we're bringing in both local community members, but also bringing in, uh, out of town visitors to that facility, you know, as a advertiser or someone looking for a, a partnership of that kind, having as many eyeballs on something as you can is how, you, you know, you can be successful and have those partnerships. So again, building that facility where, where we can run a, a lot of events, where we can have our community members coming through the site on the, the bike trails and other things like that. Uh, that's how we envision being successful with, um, working on those private funds and being able to expand that. So we can expand what's, um, within the facility. When it comes to, uh, this location, uh, specifically, um, having that access where, um, we're near a highway, major roadways, I think is helpful. Again, when it comes to having those partnerships as well. Uh, if, if I can just perhaps respond to a, a previous comment. One thing we did, and, and Mr. Yetzer can correct me if I give the wrong information here, but we looked at what is that population with about a mile radius around each of these sites? And this site, uh, the affordable, um, housing type of, um, infrastructure that's around this site is not too dissimilar from, uh, one of the other sites that was in that within about a hundred houses difference within that one mile radius. So we feel like there is that local benefit of walk to bike to, um, community members who could get to this facility and participate in activities there.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Doring.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how to list my questions. So I'm going to list them. I'm going to start locally and then go to regional, if that's, if that's okay. Uh, when is the trail connection going to be completed? So it is actually achievable to get there through multimodal transportation?
I would ask Mr. Niggerberg to help me with that answer.
Thank you for the question. Um, right now we are in a feasibility stage of that trail design. Um, we plan on taking that trail feasibility through towards the end of the year and then start the design phase for construction in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. So for completion. So timing wise, it'll work out fairly well with the overall construction of the project.
Yep. Thank you so much. Um, then as we consider, I, my preference along with the mayor's would have been a more centralized location. I understand that that was not a possibility. So what kind of public transportation plan is happening currently so that the, the facility is much more accessible than it is currently?
I can take that one. Thanks, Councilmember Doring. Um, just currently, the, the site is currently served with thirty-minute bus service on Route two oh six. So it is served regularly with transit service already. Um, but certainly as this develops, our transit plans can be updated to, to take a look at, is that the right amount of service or should that be increased?
Can you talk a little bit about Route two oh six? Does that, uh, what are the hours of that, that, uh, particular, uh, run or, or pathway?
Yeah, it looks like it currently runs in that area from five fifty in the morning to through six twenty at night and it connects to the downtown Transit Center, which then connects to the rest of the transit system.
Okay. So what I hear you saying then currently is that if a, if a, a young person who did not have access to a personal vehicle was going to participate in a ballgame that ended at seven fifteen PM, they would not have access to public transportation to get home currently?
Correct.
Okay. Um, but that's something that we can look at as we continue to plan and phase out the plan, right? Um, I'm a big component of adaptive sports for those, uh, young people and, and older people who are, 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 um, have physical differences, um, have been a longtime supporter of the Rochester Raiders. So, uh, the high school, uh, sports team that plays adaptive softball, adaptive, uh, floor hockey and adaptive soccer. Has there been any thoughts to making these fields adaptive use fields? So creating dugouts, uh, that are, are large enough for wheelchairs to have a facility out there to where, uh, folks can store additional fencing to make those, uh, fields, uh, shorter. Um, the, I just talking at a fundraiser on, uh, Saturday with the softball coach, uh, they appreciate Miracle Field, but that is not accessible for, for some of their athletes at this point. So, uh, what plans have been put into place to draw those kinds of tournaments to Rochester?
Uh, thank you for the questions. So we, we have looked at those types of activities. In fact, we had a couple of members of the Special Olympics, um, organization were part of the twenty twenty-three work that we did as we considered this. I think, you know, as we look at that universal design, how can we make it accessible, um, creating, make sure we have the, um, easily accessible trails up to all the fields, for example, so that, uh, you're not trying to navigate, uh, uneven ground. That sort of thing will be important. Uh, the portable fencing is certainly in our, um, plans, uh, for that use as well as, you know, going from the different age groups and different sizes there. So those are definitely on our minds, uh, and we would be reaching out again i- if things move forward this evening as, and we start getting into those more detailed design questions, um, relying on our partners that are in our community. As you mentioned, the Raiders, Special Olympics, our own adaptive recreation program, accessible rec within the Park and Rec Department. Um, you know, we have great staff there as well and great clientele and families that can help us with gathering that information to make it as, um, accessible and as universally available as we can.
Mr. Bolt, I really appreciate that answer. And this is where I'm getting lost in whether we're talking about just a site selection, if we're talking about design, or talking about programming. So I'm going to talk about programming for a second now. Um, what's the intended, who's the intended operator of this facility? Is it going to be operated by Parks and Rec or is it going to be operated by an outside vendor?
So to date, the information that we've shared has been a third-party operator. Um, so that question has come up. How do we operate that? How do we kind of have some control within that? As we've looked at what other communities are doing where they have a private operator, they spell all that outright in the contract. You know, here's how many prime time hours we want available for this type of programming. Here's perhaps off-peak time that we're also wanting to have for community programming, free programming, reduced programming. The way we developed the pro forma had some of that baked into it where the revenue we're able to generate on the weekend tournaments helps us make the fields more available at a lower cost during the week or be able to mix in, um, some scholarship hours, things like that to lower the cost and make it more affordable. So that's where we're at to date. We do not have a opening day contract for an operator. The contract we currently have is for a operator to help us through this planning phase. So it's about a, you know, eighteen month to twenty-four month contract that we're working on right now. But, um, yeah, to be transparent, so far we have been, um, sharing and leaning towards that private operator to run the facility.
Okay. Um, I have one more question, then I'll, I'll rescind my time. And this is going to be kind of the regional, um, question. So in the presentation to date and as in our council packet, you talk- So in the presentation to date, and as in our council packet, you talk about a little bit about having the outdoor component be net positive, the indoor component not being net positive, right? So what is that dollar amount that is net positive if we're projected to Phase One outdoor before indoor?
A great question, and thank you for that question. So the pro forma that we've developed along with that operator has projected that by year two, we would be in the black, in the positive, and that includes being able to contribute towards capital reserve as well for improvements to the facility. So and year two, it was it was close to break even, it was within a few thousand dollars. Year three, as we continue to expand the number of teams, for example, that could attend a tournament, things like that, get better utilization for the facility, the projections are for that to grow each of the first five years.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Palmer. Thank you. We've used sales tax dollars before, RCTC, didn't we?
Yes, correct.
And and we have an agreement that we operate that, correct?
We do, there's a joint powers agreement where we have city representatives that, yeah, we meet regularly with the folks that run the facility from from the from RCTC, from the state, yeah.
So if if some people have difficulty getting into things, they could look at that for indoor stuff today, couldn't they?
Yes. And we, yeah, so maybe to expand on that question a bit, so they've recently turned over their facility manager out there, we've been having meetings with with that group. He he has looked at opportunities, whether it be open volleyball, some of the drop-in type programming that they hadn't been offering over the last few years to build that back in. There are other community, community accessible features like the walking track and other things that are out there, all those hours and that information's on the RCTC website.
Isn't there six basketball courts there?
There are six basketball courts, four of those are more community availability, the other two would be where the RCTC volleyball, basketball, their teams play, so some of the evening availability is more limited on in the performance court area, they call it, but in the fieldhouse area, those are all community courts. Yes, after 5:00 PM, then they're available for community reservation.
Okay. And and maybe not a question for you, but maybe for the city administrator, but we we've done CDVG money for gyms, helping out with that, and if I remember right, well, I do know that we did pilot programs with the school district on on gyms. Am I am I getting that correct?
Council President, Councilmember Palmer, yes, you utilized some contingency from the general fund in order to work with the Rochester Public Schools to provide open gym on Saturdays and Sundays in the morning and in the afternoon through the winter months of this last winter, which was sort of winter. And they utilized about half of the funds, and are you are you asking me to expound upon that? Yes, you did that.
Okay. So I'm going to go to adaptive rec, and my my boys were in adaptive rec and and we have it at the old fire station, and then we're rebuilding Silver Lake Pool finally, and they're going to be involved with that and they're going to use that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So yeah, accessible recreation right now is using the fire station at Silver Lake, the Silver Lake Station, as well as some space at the rec center and 125 Live for some of their programming. And yes, the families are very excited for the new Silver Lake Pool to open and be able to utilize that for summer day camp.
And we're spending $7 million at Silver Lake? $9 million at Silver Lake, thank you, Mr., to upgrade that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. One last thing, and and it's kind of an irritant of mine, is that everybody complains about the YMCA, well, the YMCA of the north took over the Y, and they have closed at least six different of their facilities in the state. It wasn't being used and and it was not being successful, so that's why it closed. So so when people say, you know, boy, we want to have another YMCA, we're trying to avoid that, aren't we?
I don't know if I can, thank you for the question, I don't know if I can fully answer that question. I think one of the things that I've been charged to do with our team is is to continue to develop the plan that can be financially responsible and be sustainable so that, you know, we're following the the direction we've been given so far from the council to try to do that effort.
Well, since I've been on the council, we've done two projects that I can say that that we use partnership, and one of them was the track was rebuilt with the running club, and then the second one was the tennis club out to Kotsky. They probably funded half of those projects, is that correct?
That's correct, and there's a long history of that in Rochester, really, when it comes to many of the youth sports associations, they've brought capital to the table so that we could expand, put lights at outdoor field complexes or do other expansion like that. So yes, there has been history of that here.
Thank you, Mr. Bolt. Councilmember Wall.
Well, Mr. Bolt, you know that I was one who wanted it all. It's it's disappointing. I do understand the outdoor, and you say that there is no place in the tri-state area that has eight full-size baseball fields contiguous.
That's correct.
I suspect that there are places that have eight basketball tournaments contiguous, or or basketball venue.
And if I could just offer one, sorry, one quick clarification, it would be eight artificial turf, full-size baseball.
Okay. I think I agree with the approach, the outdoor first, since that is the greater differential in terms of the number of quality diamonds we can provide as opposed to the number of courts, which can be replicated elsewhere. My son runs the second largest girls' basketball tournament in the state of Minnesota, just completed it this weekend, 182 teams on 18 courts. So even eight courts is not going to make the huge difference in terms of being able to run a huge tournament, certainly it will help. So while I would love the indoor and will work very hard with this council and with you to make that Phase Two happen, with the mayor, I'm a little worried about that weathered sign at the outdoor complex that says "coming soon," which we we have seen in other malls, and it just, I don't know what soon means to you, but it's probably sooner than 10 or 15 years. I think that I can support what we're doing tonight, even though it is a disappointment to me that that we can't move faster, I'm just shocked at how little $65 million can buck in our day. Thank you for your great work.
Councilmember Fredericks.
I've actually spoke once already, I can wait till the end. Miller and Keen have probably want to speak first before I jump in again.
I haven't seen any indication from them yet, but.
You missed it twice. You missed it twice.
Are you, Councilmember Keen?
Hey, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yep. Yeah, again, I I've been listening to this, and again, I some of this, I think we get ourselves in trouble because remember, we have to get approved, a project approved by the state and by the voters without doing any work to really say what it was going to be. We did, and and then when we got, when we did get it approved, I can remember some different visions that were put forward to the community that had, that I think most any member of the community could have saw what they wanted in those drafts, and I think that's what's causing some of our consternation tonight. And the the fact that we've done this work right now to get to the point where we know the location costs and we have, you know, the the there's others that might have been considered better but just could not fit into our pro formas. When we start talking about that outdoor and the indoor, I started seeing numbers this week about like, we we knew, we that your group has come to the point that if we continue on with indoor and try to get it to the point that we could bid it, we're going to run out of money before we can get there. And I just want to ground this discussion in the fact is, you can't go forward with everything without a different financial model.
Thank you for the question. If I'm understanding it correctly, as Administrator Zellman said earlier, to be able to build the full scale of what we, what the community asked for on the indoor side, we we would not be able to do that with the $65 million that we have.
And I think that's an important like basis for this discussion. I mean, it's, you know, we'll, it's February right now and we're in spending mode, but we'll get into September where we'll say like, why are we have to raise taxes so much? And right now, we have to, right now, we're in a, in a, in a process to get us to the point of staying within what we said we were going to do. And and again, I want to just establish that and make sure I'm not missing anything, because what I don't want to do is say ever onward and ended up with two plans and no money left. Because I think that that's what I thought where I was being told in the last month or so is that if you continue on with these plans, you'll run out of money before you get something built.
Yes, there's a lot of those soft costs that we have to spend before we can even get to building a facility that the community will be able to see and utilize. And to your point, fully 100% designing both the indoor and outdoor component would be more expensive than designing for, you know, the $65 million budget that we have, roughly $40 million of which would be construction. Designing for that is different than designing for the full scope that would be, you know, likely over $100 million. So that's that, that's, I think, answering, hopefully answering your question about choosing a path forward now will be more economical, more efficient use of the funds.
Another one of the base discussions, we've been going back and forth with, I think for almost three years now, is that idea, are we building a sports complex with regional like gravity? Or are we building a community center that has health and almost like modeled on a Y? I mean, I think we've had that discussion way back when, and I think we decided operationally that we were going to build something with regional attractiveness with the idea that that would be the operational model for an asset that then could then be used by the community. And that was the model we were on. We weren't, we didn't fail to build a Y, we didn't start out to build a Y.
Thank you for the question. Correct, we we, the tension, and and I think you touched on the nuance there, is building a facility that can have, can be able to host those regional tournaments, but then have it available, program it and schedule it in a way that it can be available for community use as well. I see there being the ability to to attempt to do both. But yes, being a community center, that was not a part of the plan as far as my experience with the project.
But we did have those debates, and we have had that often on, and it seems clear to me now, 18 months later, that we didn't come to an agreement, because there's still people calling me or writing me or or even some of our state legislature saying, you didn't do what you said you were going to do. And and I'm, I I don't know if that's a failure of us to communicate, or if it's just the nature of the world we live in, that when you float those ideas out there, everybody sees what they want to see. And and I think we're dealing with some of that fallout here today. I think right now, as I come here tonight, I do see the three-part motion. One is, are we ready to purchase the property? And and that's a tough one, because I think we'd all agree that we would rather it be something more, you know, inner city, and it didn't end up happening that way. The second thing is, are we are we ready to move on building the outdoor assets that we can put into the marketplace sooner than later? And then the third part is, should we continue on with the indoor thing with the idea of getting both better definition and some other funding sources? And and let me spend a minute on this. This doesn't mean like, what's the city going to do to come up with this other money? This is really an outcall to these groups that say, this isn't what we expected. And my take would be is like with the the foundation, and I I see things about medical, if somebody thinks they're going to get an indoor thing that doesn't pencil out for the city, but we're going to buy it for them, I I think they don't have a clear view of how this is going to work. And I I saw it this past week with my mail, that I'm seeing people who had a totally different view of what they thought we were doing. And if if we can get something out of today, as I hopefully, when we go forward, that it's more clear to them that you don't wait to say what it's done and then say, that's not what I wanted. You, if you need, if you think that you want naming rights or you think you're going to do the gap analysis and fill it, you should be in the room doing that and not waiting until now, because I think you guys have correctly said, we're on a schedule to buy the property, and if we buy it, we don't want to buy it and then not do anything on it. So that's where I think I'm at, but I'm trying to, I I'm sort of commending the staff to say, do not go out and overextend us. Don't don't build something that we don't know how we're going to operate into the future, and we're probably going to have to hit the levy for, you know, some some above and beyond park and recreational spending. I don't want to see that happen. And it's my take right now that you've come to me with a recommendation that said, if we went a different way, we probably would have that happening.
Yes, that that is correct. All the information we have as of today with that annual operating budget looks more favorable to start with the outdoor. They have, so we have developed like the full vision pro forma as well, where we would have the outdoor assets and the indoor assets. That pro forma also looks favorable. The the one that, the two that we weren't able to get the math to work on was that one where we just did smaller scale, kind of splitting the vision and or just indoor only, the pro forma was going to need subsidy for that.
Okay. And and I do want to make a comment on, you said we're working with this operator. When I picture what Phase One would be right now with these outdoor spaces, and frankly, a fair amount of community space too, with the idea of a, you know, a regional trail going through there and a playground, a dog park, things like that, I think that fits in pretty well with what our park and rec schedule or operates right now. And I and I guess I would challenge the need that we need an outside operator that needs to be fed off the same place too. So it's something to consider on the out, when we're in, we're dealing with outdoor assets.
Council President, Councilmember, I don't know if that was a statement, a question or a question statement, but I can maybe just share with you that as we have come forward with that direction, those are all things that we're thinking about, and everything is on the table. We just want to make sure that what's on the, because outdoor is very different than operating an indoor facility, obviously. So we want to make sure that we look at all of those options and understand if this is an expansion of what we do today, what does that look like? We have a lot of partners that are a part of that, but we also want to make sure that we do have a new experience where some of the ways that we have funded things in the past, some people feel blocked out of that because some partner bought something and it doesn't come with that thing that they bought if you utilize the field. So making sure, you know, kind of like what you talked about at your last study session, what do you want to be true in 10 years to still be true, and what isn't there now that you want to be true in 10 years? And so outdoor is a little bit different, but rest assured that just like everything else, we're we're looking at all of the options about what would be best for the community, recognizing that we are firmly, if approved, in a phased approach that is different than building everything.
No, thank you for that, and I guess I also wanted to comment just on Councilmember Doring's procedural question here, that I feel the right action for this council would be to take a three-part motion, and then if we wanted to try to, you know, amend any of those, we should do it as a group and not get into some road where we're off buying land but not doing something else. So that's what my hope would be, and we'll see where it goes.
Councilmember Miller.
So I want to start just acknowledging that I feel like a lot of what we're talking about is a limitation of transportation. And I I just want to make sure I'm reading this clearly, that the surface parking space for the fully developed site is about 13 acres, right, of the development?
For the full, like the full vision, yeah.
And in the in the presentation, it talks about some percentage of the 30-acre site, and it looks to me that that calculates out to about 13 acres of surface parking.
Yeah, it's about 1,400 spaces is what we're envisioning.
So would it be fair to say that some of the other sites that would be more in-town, right, in development, are probably excluded because of the extra need for for space for, and that's just the trade-off of transportation, right? You know, we cannot expect necessarily that people are accessing the space in a multimodal way, probably a large percentage by car, without being able to park on-site. And that parking space just takes up, you know, in this plan, 13 acres. So just acknowledging that, because the other thing I was looking at is, from where we are sitting now to the IBM site, it's about a 4.8 mile drive. From where we are sitting now to the proposed site, it's a 4.7 mile drive. It's just that our development has, our population center is more northwest than southeast, right? So I just want to acknowledge that I think a lot of the the difficulty of the site is how we've grown as a city and the transportation plan that we have and the design and the access, right? Because I hear that coming up a lot of. Because I hear that coming up a lot of, how do I get to the site? How do youths get to the site? How do they use it? Even beyond what's built there, programming, like, it's just difficult, difficult to access that, and it takes up 13 acres of our necessary land to, to build the parking. Is that, I just probably more comment than question, Council President, but I appreciate the, the flexibility. So it's just difficult, right? But I, I did want to ask, looking at the legislative language, you know, I know we've talked about regional significance. One of the other pieces I read is it mentioned substantial community and stakeholder engagement and an equity, equity-focused co-design team. Has there been significant community engagement beyond the operator and our staff team since the community working group last met in 2023?
In 2024, so fall or summer of 24 through fall of 24, our operator did, and along with myself, I was involved on several of those meetings and phone calls. But meeting with sports groups, community groups, individuals, providing feedback. I've gotten a lot of feedback over, you know, the last two years as this project has proceeded, and I'm taking that information with me to the, to the meetings that we have about the, you know, the project meetings. So I would say, you know, in, in 2023, we did quite a bit of community engagement as, as you referred to, but we, we have followed up with several of those groups and, and individuals in 2024 as we look to confirm the market study and gaps analysis and, and find how, if there's things that needed to be updated or tweaked.
Okay, so in the presentation, the engagement approach lists CWG participants and different groups and different individuals. Would they say today that they've remained involved in that process, would you say? Like, would they see themselves in this proposed design or the, the phase one action?
I'm not sure if I can totally speak for someone else. I mean, they may, they, they would, they would feel or, you know, they, they would have their, I, I would say that I've, again, I've tried to be available. We did work through the fall of 24 to, to reach out to, to several different groups and speak to them. That's about the best I can answer that question.
Administrator Zellm?
Council President, Councilmember Miller. Not designed this by committee. So, so I mean, to the, to the extent that we haven't had people in the room going through the pro forma and, and hashing out, you know, what, what square footage could something be like, we're not at that level of design that, that we could do that effectively. And I think one of my concerns to the point of your discussion on H1 is that how and when you do some of those things can set expectations that are not necessarily realistic. And I would hope that as we move forward, we would continue to do that, once we have more site layout. There's a certain amount that you can do and that you can't do if you really want something to be functional. And so having it be within a realistic footprint that actually operate, from an operating perspective, I think would be important, where maybe you could be tweaking some things, or someone can say, you know, like, if we're talking about adaptive rec, you know, really it needs to be that diamond because there's no way I'm going to make it to that one that's over there. If the layout is as such that it needs to be recognizing some of the site features. So I don't know that someone would feel that way, but to some of the points earlier, I'm not sure that folks that stopped by at a community event and said that they wanted to have X, Y, and Z in the facility would still be, you know, feel represented in, in whether it was indoor or outdoor.
I, I appreciate that. Is there an option though, or is it, would it be a priority of phase one, moving forward with, toward a final design, to do a process of equity-focused co-design, which I, I would guess would be considered by our local legislators to have been a promise or a, a direction we were moving, even if regional significance varied of, of how that was approached? Because I read it in both presentations and our, our framing of that $65 million sports complex.
Thank you for the question. I would say, we've talked about that a bit internally, similar to what the Soldier's Field process was as we worked through that aquatics and park updates there, incorporating something like that, where we can get a, you know, a small group together that represents varied, you know, portions of our population and community and be able to provide some of that input when it comes to, you know, things that we talked about, universal design earlier, you know, some of those types of things where hearing from others and their experiences and helping us craft that, I agree, would be helpful.
Thanks for bringing up the Soldier Field pool design. I, I was actually part of that team, and I feel like what was the, the great part of that process is that we did have a clear vision of what we were working towards. We had a budget that we were working within, and we had access to consultants and designers at each phase of the process. Not to have a wide-ranging, what, what are the infinite possibilities that this could be, but talking with community and stakeholder engaged parties. I think of the comments earlier about the adaptive, the Paralympics and participation there and needs. But how people in our community who are beyond regional tourism, the sports tourism, could have a place to be able to see the options presented, have meaningful input that, that affects the design, and then hopefully come back to us and to other community members and say, we were engaged. Here's how we had input, and we did meaningfully do this, this co-design process so that it is economically viable, but also reflects the needs of our community. I, I feel like I've, I've heard that over and over in comments tonight, questions I've gotten, other conversations. And I, I found that process to be personally very, much of basis to, to be able to give that assurance to the community.
Any additional questions?
Is that, that, that would be the plan then, right, to, to develop a, or, or should we, or does this request for action not yet specify that? Should we, should that be a modification if we wanted that?
Administrator Zellm?
Council President, Councilmember Miller, we have, as Mr. Bolt mentioned, talked as a team. I, I just would want to kind of clarify that the Soldier's Field process was a modified co-design, and so I think that's what we would be looking at. And one of the things that I think from a staff perspective was really successful about the Soldier's Field process was that we did, as you described, have the framework. And so we were working within a framework, not sort of an open-ended idea, but what, within the framework of, of what can work, is able to be adjusted to meet certain different requirements in a way that meets the framework, whether that's economic or operation, economical within the initial funding that is available. And be, so I think that's doable. Our, it would likely be our communication and engagement team, our own teammates that would be doing much of that and connecting in, as we did before with the consultants. But I think that that's feasible. I think if there's the understanding that would need to be within a framework.
And we have enough time to do that on the current trajectory? I think we had about two months on the Soldier's Field Aquatic Center?
I think you have time. We're not, I mean, I don't even think it would start right away based on the level of design that we're at.
Okay. And I guess my final question is, just what are the economic risks, thinking about construction costs? You know, tariffs were proposed and then went away just within the last 48 hours. Things feel very, very much risky and variable on the economic front. How is that, you know, range in the pro forma? How, how high a utilization level would we need to see in years two, three, four, et cetera, to have an economically positive outcome of this facility?
It's a good question. It's been on our mind, right? That's partly why we came with the recommendation we did, is we feel that we're able to mitigate the risk more likely on, starting with the outdoor side versus the indoor side. We think there's more risk there when it comes financially. So, you know, we, we have great local sports partners that can help us to, with, with programming some of those tournaments upfront. We have during the market study time last fall and into the winter of 24, worked with regional and state organizers of those types of events as well. And they've expressed interest in being at this facility if it were to come to be, you know, with the Diamond Sport focus of the outdoor site. So there's, yeah, there's risk. The future isn't, I mean, there is unknowns, right? But we, with our construction manager, excuse me, our construction manager as well, they feel more comfortable proceeding within our budget of $65 million on the outdoor site than some of the unknowns and risks of the indoor site too. So that's probably about as best as I could answer that question.
Councilmember Fredericks.
I think you've heard from me enough tonight. We're good.
Councilmember Keen?
I think I'd like to put a motion on the table. I'd like to do a three-part motion to, number one, authorize finalization and negotiations with Seneca on the property purchase. Number two, direct the city and design teams to continue phase one of the Rochester Sports and Rec Complex, focusing on the outdoor-oriented programming. And number three, direct the city team to continue to explore future funding options and partnerships to implement the indoor-oriented features in the second phase of the project.
A motion made by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Palmer. Mr. Keen, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I guess I just want to add one other thing with the motion is, I had some discussions over the last couple of days on this whole, you know, getting to, what percent of a project do you need, do you have, that you can start talking to say, like, get to the point that you're having now, have the next phase where you have what do you need to talk to a house and, and those are dramatically different things, level of details you need. And the amount of expense you take on to get from, I, I hate to use these percents because I can't define them, but from 10% conceptual, you know, drawings towards schematics that you can hand to it, I mean, that you're probably spending 40% of the project in those phases. And these are the things I think we need to be careful with. I think we need to get a better definition of insert, like with clear boundaries to say, this is in and this is not in. But, but I don't know how you get to the point if someone says, what would it take to add that in, and, and how do you get to that point? But I would like, when I think of the three-part motion, I think of the main focus right now is, I think you guys have done the due diligence on the property. Now the work will be preparing the property, but I think we want to get, spend most of our effort getting through part two of the motion to get the outdoor space built and make sure we get this up and operational as we work through whatever is the indoor definitions. Because I think those are going to take longer, and I think those are going to be tied to where does the funding come from.
Councilmember Palmer. Other thoughts, Councilmembers? Mayor Norton.
Yeah, I'm just going to state one more time. I think the location is not ideal. I wish we were taking more time to do more negotiations to try to get a place, because this isn't a rush. We have 20 years of gaining sales tax. We're not in a rush. So I wish we were taking it slower and getting something more central to the community. And I, again, what, what we're moving forward with, I understand the rationale that you're giving and lots, lots of talking. It's still not what the community wants for the community to be able to do now. Waiting five or 10 or 15 years for a phase two, which is an indoor facility in the state of Minnesota, where we have cold weather and rain and snow a good part of the year, is not, in my opinion, and I think the opinion of people we've heard from, meeting the needs, desires, and expectations of our community. I will say, having said all that, again, and I, and if you can find a way to do the bubble, I think that's a happy medium. And I hope, and I didn't hear it when, when you read the one, two, and three, I don't hear it in three like I, like I would like to hear it. But I'm just going to say for the record, please try to find a way to make something in phase one so that the community can have that place that they asked for, for the amenities they expect. And, you know, I guess, I think this will be a lovely project. I'm, you know, I want to be really clear about that. I think whatever you do will be lovely. I just, I think we're, we're going to get ourselves in trouble, both with the community and with our legislature, if we're not hearing what they're saying, which is, this needs to be for the community first and that regional competitive second. So that's my final rant.
Thank you, Mayor Norton. From my standpoint, I, I, I will be supporting this motion, and I, I guess I look at the site and thank you, Councilmember Miller, for sharing those mileage numbers. Because I look at southeast and having lived in the Slatterly Park neighborhood for 15 years, that's where I went, shops on Main. And, and from an edge development standpoint, I like this because it will give us balance to our edge development. We are going so far out in northwest that we're going to hit Byron, you know, any day now. And so to be able to see some development that moves in another direction, and there is, as you mentioned, there is, we have the airport down there. We're closer to I-90. And so from a regional sports attraction, there may be that radius of 600 that, you know, those of us in here in Minnesota may not like it, but Iowans and Wisconsinites that will attract to a unique outdoor facility. So the, the, the site, I don't, I don't see a problem with. Starting with outdoor, I also feel that from a strategic standpoint, where we are really looking for those big investors, those funders that come in, those angel investors, they need to know where the site is. They also want to see, you know, what you have there already. And so I think it does give us the flexibility to, to seek out those, those sponsorships, naming rights, investors. The piece that I want to really make sure that our team does is put in the rigor and on that piece of it. Really look, and not just state dollars, but private sector, not just our regional healthcare providers, but really look to finding tho, those prospects and then hooking them in and, and giving, giving us the opportunity to really bring in more dollars to, to, to build the kind of, of bricks and mortar facility that we want to see. So second point, third point, fully agree with Mayor Norton. We really, from a rec standpoint, really have to have, get understanding into the community about access to, to our community for this site. I, I'm glad to hear that bus routes and, and trail connections are going to be there, but also across Rochester, that access to those underserved groups, the, some of, I, during last year's campaign, spoke to our Somali representatives several times. Top issue, we need things to have our young people participate in, to healthy activities. So we need to see that throughout this community. And so it's this site, it's all of our sites. So with that, I, I will be supporting this motion. Councilmember Fredericks.
Thank you. I agree with President Schubring on that. I'm actually a huge advocate for the southeast location as well. It's an area that could use a, a shot in the arm. It's extremely easy to get to. Get off Highway 63, you're, you're less than a mile to the entrance to the facility. It's a great spot. And they have the nice roundabout to the east of it, where you can come off 52, drop down, hit the roundabout, and you're right there. Super simple. I'm, I'm excited for it because I dwell in the southeast. I like it down here. So, and it's, I'm, I'm, I'm pro for the, for all the activity it'll generate down there, and it'll be a nice catalyst for that area. County has done a nice job on the park across the street. Really cool. I don't know if you guys have been out there sliding and stuff. If anybody, if you haven't been out there, go check it out. It's pretty awesome. Or is that City? Sorry, City. All right. Anyway, hey, so there you go. I have been there, by the way. Anyhow, so good job, City, on that. But here's a, here's what I know about development. When you try to wedge in a development of this size in the middle of a city, you're, you're fighting a lot of things. You're going to have constraints on you, whether it be for, for a lot of things. But the first thing you're going to hear from the neighbors is traffic. We don't like the traffic. We don't like the lighting at night. We don't like the noise. They're going to have all kinds of things they don't like because they don't like change. Out there, your neighbors are, they're sitting right behind you. They're ecstatic you're coming out there. He can't beat that. You're, you're, there's a battle you don't have to fight. And you know what? We like exercise. It's only four and a half miles from the core of town, is what Nick just said. That's a great bike ride. Piece of cake. So I, I'm, I'm excited about it. I, I commend you and all the work you guys have done to get this put together. It's exciting to see. work you guys have done to get this put together. It's exciting to see, it seems like a lot of like negative lights come in the last few days. This is exciting for this community. So I just want to kind of end on that. Good job.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Doring?
Thank you so much for the hard work that you've put in to this project. I commend your team for the work that you've put in. I am also going to be supporting this motion. That being said, I am, I have expectations, and I'm going to continue to push for safe biking accessibility to the site. I agree that a four-and-a-half-mile bike ride is very, very doable, as long as you can be safe doing it. Right now, that site is not safe to accessible, safe to bike to. I also have the expectation that we will develop a more robust public transportation system out to that site. I have the expectation, and I will continue to push for community programming at the site. I hear that from community members. I see that in the data provided in our report, that there is a huge desire for more community programming for youth in our community, and I think to not leverage this beautiful site and this beautiful complex to achieve that goal would be a mistake. Finally, I would also commend the Parks and Rec Department to be the operator of the facility. I agree with Councilmember Keen on this point. I think if we are going to do a mixture of regional sports programming as well as community programming, it makes more sense to me that the community is in charge of that programming rather than an outside operator. So that all being said, I will be supporting this motion.
Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, thanks for bringing up the, the distance is doable, the infrastructure is lacking, because I think that that's, those are the two pieces that we have to think about when we think about community access. My daughter could bike five miles right now. Would I let her bike down Broadway or any of those access points? Absolutely not. So I would just anchor our discussion, too, in thinking about the broader implications beyond this site. The county just in Roca completed a Willow Creek transportation study that includes this area. We're updating our comprehensive plan, and the current comprehensive plan talks about a transit-supported corridor, but along southeast or South Broadway, but only down to 25th Street southeast is a potential secondary park-and-ride type node. I would think that that's a real opportunity for us to consider moving forward, how that intersection and connectivity works. Because looking forward, I think it also is really exciting to see some investment in our southeast part of town. A lot of people don't have access to the recreational amenities of northwest, the Douglas Trail, other developments. So I think that this is potentially a really good use of our opportunity to invest in parts of towns that have largely been underserved. However, like Councilmember Doring, I will be really looking for some guidance that that's how this project is moving forward, incorporating community co-design into, once it gets to the phase where we have people talking about the accessibility, difficulty with bus access, other things beyond just the sports and tournament community. I would really be looking for that. And so I've been on the fence. I think that I do plan to support this motion at where we stand today, moving forward the site, knowing that it's coming back to us. We have some other opportunities to consider the other systems, right, that intersect as a community with a sports and recreation complex and where community assets exist. Because it's a rec complex on the site as proposed.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other councilmembers that wish to be heard on this item? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Moving on to item H3, which is the former F-19, which is Minnesota Public Facilities Authority Grant acceptance, and this is an item that was polled by Councilmember Miller. Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
Yes, and I'd like to just thank RPU staff. I recognize that you've been here for quite a while. I'm sorry to put you at the very end of the meeting. As I look at this item, I'm very excited that we have a grant opportunity to cover the majority of costs for replacing lead and galvanized service to community members who either have known services or to investigate and make sure that they are receiving safe water supply, especially with the priority that a lot of these areas have the highest percentages of children five and under in our community. The reason I polled it is just so that we are talking about reporting and tracking, because we know that there's a potential estimate of up to about $500 per property that might not be covered fully by the grant, some carrying costs, et cetera. And I would just ask that we receive reporting back of rates, both of the actual costs as you get underway with this project, and also any number of properties as there may be opting out. And if people are citing cost as a reason for opting out of accepting the improvements, and just thinking about how we can work together to make sure that everybody in our community, regardless of income, has access to this replacement service. So I don't know if you have plans. I don't know that we need to modify the requested action, but those are just some of my thoughts in reviewing this.
Staff, any, Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, if I may. Tim McCullough, General Manager for Rochester Public Utilities, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor. I'm happy to report and be the bearer of good news. As recently as 3 o'clock this afternoon, we received word from Minnesota PFA that the components that we believe weren't going to be covered are. And so we believe at this point, we will be able to minimize the cost, hopefully to zero, for all customers who would be receive benefit of the funding from the Drinking Water Revolving Fund. So, but to the question, we will be tracking very closely the metrics on participation. Even though this should have minimal to no cost to customers, participation is still going to be voluntary, and there may be other reasons that customers either not, for many reasons, may not be able to. And we'd be happy to report that. We're intending to add that to the action plan updates, which are a routine communication, and add the lead service line and galvanized service line replacement program to those routine communications, and we'll look forward to future updates. It is our recommendation not to modify the resolution at this point. If there is any minor costs, we would still be looking for alternate sources so that we can keep this program affordable or free to those customers that would receive benefit of it. And just like to highlight again, we focus the program as it is intended to be, towards the highest need economically first, and also where the presence of children are in the home. And so those are the areas that would likely have the least ability to afford a fee. So we're very pleased to bring that forward, and I apologize that that wasn't included in the RCA in the first place, but this is brand-new information that we've heard in our ongoing communications. I'd like to give a shout-out also to our Director of Water, Todd Blumstrom, to my right here. This program would not be where it's at without him joining us. He's still within his first 90 days as well, and has new employee orientation at the city, I believe, next week. So Todd has a lot to do with the success of this program up to this date, so I'd like to recognize him as well here. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you both, and thank you, Todd, for your work to get this wonderful resource into our community and get, make sure that everybody is safe, and especially those youngest among us. With that, I would like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing the Public Utility Board to accept the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority Grant, multi-year budget amendments for 2025 to 2029 to fund a project of up to $26.7 million in related revenues, associated access fee to the property owner for indirect costs for improvements to customer-owned property not covered by the grant.
Second, motion made by Councilmember Miller and seconded by Councilmember Doring. Discussion on this item?
I don't have anything to add other than just thank you, and I'll defer to Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I'm really glad to get, this is new news to me right now. We spent the last, December and January, at the RPU board meeting, going through this. And this is a serious conflict between what looked like state law and our charter was in conflict. And I'm glad to hear that that, and I know Todd had told me that this has got to be worked out, because this is something that state grant actually said, "You can't charge the customers," and as a utility, we didn't have the ability not to do that based on charter direction. So really gratified to see it. And I want to commend Councilmember Miller of kind of looking at this and saying, like, "What can we do to keep this from being in trouble?" So I'm glad you took that on. So thank you for that.
Mayor Norton?
Yep, agreed, and thank you for bringing this up. And I want to publicly thank both Tim and Todd for providing me the information, because this was actually a workshop I just gave at a recent conference. And so now I know way more about this issue than I ever thought I would know. But we're very fortunate compared, for two reasons, compared to other cities and so other states around the country. A, we have a state that has provided some grant opportunities for us that is not happening in other states, and the federal government is requiring states to do lead and copper abatement, but not being able to fund it. So we're fortunate in Minnesota, and I'm thrilled that they got the word. And the second thing is, we have relatively low housing stock with issues. And that was something, as I've talked to other states, other cities in other states, about the thousands and thousands and thousands of homes that have to be abated. And ours is relatively small, and a lot of it's unknown. And so we may get in there and find that there's less than we think. But anyway, just thought, wanted to publicly thank the two of them, and also Nick for bringing this up so that we could get the great news.
Well, with that, and one, this feels like the most successful polled agenda item, certainly in my tenure. So congratulations to everybody. And with that, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Tim. And team. Moving on to, I don't believe we have any council-initiated actions, and we do not have any ordinance first readings. We have a second reading. Mr. Spindler, Craig, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. This item is feeling a little bland following that one. However, there is one second reading this evening, K1, an ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately 67.77 acres of land located north and east of the intersection of 18th Avenue Northwest and 55th Street Northwest identified by PIN numbers 084738, 057185, 058182, and 084739.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Palmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spindler, Craig. We have no tabled items, and we have one other business, my other business, and this is my attempt to encourage my colleagues to do the same. I just wanted to let my colleagues know that I will be joining Mayor Norton this Thursday, attending my first Destination Medical Center Corporation Board Meeting. If this is a public meeting, it's this Thursday, February 6, 9:30 a.m., Mayo Civic Center. It also is streamed. And just a kind of a preview of items that are going to be on our agenda, we will be doing a five-year update to the 20-year DMC Development Plan. This includes both a look back at the last 10 years as well as specific goals for the next five years in alignment with the main goals of DMC. We'll also have an expenditure request to support Second Street Public Realm Enhancement around the Link BRT project, and we will have also another application for the Historic Preservation District Grant Program, which will come to us after that. And this is for building system upgrades to the old City Hall building. And then we will also discuss pedestrian improvements to the Peace Plaza experience. So any questions, concerns on that, those issues, talk to me or Mayor Norton. And with that, is there any other other business from councilmembers? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer, seconded by Councilmember Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.